Good evening, Ryland.
Hi, Randy.
Can somebody talk to us? Make sure I got my sound okay?
Yeah, you sound good, Lee. We can hear you here at the council chambers.
Okay, thank you much. You look good, Mayor.
How come we're the only ones wearing masks? Where is your mask, Lee?
I had it on the day when I went to Walmart and I had it on when I pumped gas at Fleet Farm and I had it on one other time today, so. I'm a mask believer. We could, they should zoom back the camera and see in your lofty position there.
Oh, you're downstairs.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta turn your mic on to hear.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I stopped.
Yeah, who knows? Very nice. It'll feel kinda odd going back in that room, huh, Robin?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but you'll be a little bit more lonesome than having a, what were you, 29 supervisor, something like that?
Yep.
Yeah.
If I could just take a minute, so it looks like one of the council members is on at the last four digits is nine, four, six, five. Is that Eric?
Nope, hey, Randy.
That's Nate, okay. We got you, Nate. Let me just rename you.
Okay.
What's last, how do you spell Nate's last name? Nate, spell your last name for me.
Yep, M-E-R-R-I-L-L.
M-E-R-R-I-L-L. Okay, got it.
Like you go north of Wausau.
Got it. Okay, just for the council members, so we are down in the basement here and we're, our mic system, we're on the first floor, our mic system is tied into Zoom, hopefully you can hear us a lot better.
Yes.
And that sound comes a little clearer as long as, as long as the staff is using the mic and the mayor will have his on. That's it. We've got 32 attendees from the public, I see, and in the room we have four attendees at this time.
Okay, everyone, we're gonna start our meeting and we're gonna stand with the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Menominee Council Meeting. Take this off, July 20th, 2020. We've got some things that we're gonna do here real quick, so Mr. Idy, if you could bring us up to date on our Zoom meeting information.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So again, we're down on the first floor of City Hall Building, the old Dunn County Boardroom. We are mic'd in through Zoom. The council members, we have you up on the big screen and we have you on a couple of small screens. We have four people from the public here and right now it looks like 36 members of the public virtually attending. For the public virtually attending, when the mayor does open up the public hearing or public comments, if he wishes to speak, you usually can hover down below your name under Participants and you'll have an option to raise your hand at that time and we will call you or the mayor will call you as, as he sees you on the list. If you're on a cellphone, it's star nine to raise your hand. Again, if you're on a cellphone, it's star nine. And then we ask, and if you wanna mute yourself online on a cellphone, it's star six. And then for the council members, just as a courtesy, if you could, if you could mute, we're getting some background noise if, if you're, unless you're speaking, but if you could mute during the meeting, that would be much appreciated. So anything else, Mr. Mayor?
No, I think you've covered it, Mr. Idy. With that, if we could have a roll call, please.
Luther.
Here.
Traxler.
Here.
Sutherland. Sweeney.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Schlu.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Sommerfeld.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any special recognitions this evening, so with that, we can go on to approval of minutes. If anybody'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes, now would be a good time to do so. Okay, Ryland Erdman, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, Chad Schlu.
A second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. Tonight on our agenda, we have a public hearing. We have two public hearings. We'll take 3A, the public hearing for the general development plan review of Estover Terrace on a 29.05 acre unplanted parcel lying southeast of the southerly terminus of the 17th Street East. And with that, the public hearing is open for individuals to speak on that topic matter. We ask that you are, make your points and it be as brief as possible. And please, if somebody else is making those same points, you can just kinda let us know that you agree with somebody else. Meanwhile, I'm gonna give Mr. Idy the mic for a second.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So just as a general overview, I'll try to just refresh everybody on the planned unit development that's before you. I'm gonna share a couple of screens. So first, looking at the map of the City of Menominee and we're gonna zoom in. The area we're looking at for this planned unit development is in the southeast portion of the city. It is generally where my cursor is in this area here. You can see 17th Street running north and south. To the north, 11th Avenue coming off of 21st Street and the, and the area the PUD we're looking at is connecting these two. Let me bring up the actual planned unit development. I'll give a second for that to come up. So again, you see 17th Street in the upper left corner of the map and then 11th Avenue off to your right and this planned unit development connects those two streets. And just as a general overview, this was, this planned unit development was introduced on June 1st to the city council. It's a, as a general PUD at 156 units, it had eight 12-plexes, five 8-plexes, seven twin homes. And at that point, it was five single homes, so it was 100 and technically it was 155 units at that point. Introduced at the council on June 1st. It went to the Plan Commission on June 22nd for a public hearing in accordance with their ordinance. And that PUD went there. At that point, it had 156 units, one extra single family unit was added. So it was introduced or brought to the Plan Commission as eight 12-plexes, five 8-plexes, seven twin homes and six single family. You can see it on the map, single family here, twin homes just north of that. The 12-plexes are in the center of your map and the five 8-plexes are over here. The Plan Commission held a public hearing and they favorably recommended the PUD with the change of the 12-plexes, a recommended change that all the 12-plexes be converted into 8-plexes. So that would've been a total of 124 units. That's 13 8-plexes total, seven twin homes and six single family. That was again on June 21st, I believe, June 21st, 22nd. Thanks, Lowell. And what the council has before them right now is the same general plan. The developer has, and I think the developer will speak to it, he has laid out a couple of options after listening to the Plan Commission. So he has the general plan as presented at 156 units. He also has option two, which is 140 units. Essentially, he's taking those eight 12-plexes and turning them into four 8-plexes and four 12-plexes. So he's got a second option at 140 units and he has a third option, which meets the Plan Commission recommendation at 124 units. Each one of those options does have a small price to it, or a price to it, I will say. Because on the first option, the city did ask for the road to be extended southerly towards Dairyland and he's asking for a price of $75,000 to do that extension. So once again, the planned unit development has been introduced to the city council. It has gone to the Plan Commission. They made their recommendation on reduced density and it is here at, as a public hearing before the city council for your action, if you so choose to take action at a later time.
Well, good, thank you, Mr. Idy, for that piece of information and the map and brings us up to speed. So with that, I will open the public hearings and again, if you would like to raise your hand or speak as far as the public goes, you can star, go ahead, star nine.
Star nine or, or just hover over your name and you should be able to raise your hand. We have three from the virtual that have their hand up right now. Mr. Mayor, you wanna take them in that order, start?
Please.
You take them. Okay, I see Chris Recker is the first one up. Chris, we're gonna turn your mic on and allow you to speak. Chris, you have the microphone.
All right, thank you. My name's Chris Recker and I live at 1408 Main Street. Over the course of my telephone conversations on Sunday with city leaders, I learned of what I see as a deal breaker for this development. It was shared with me yesterday that city planning and city engineering staff have developed a grant application for a 21st Street reconstruction project that would rebuild the stretch of 21st Street from in front of the middle school up to Dairyland Road to include utility work, street reconstruction with wider lanes, turning lanes, walkway design, et cetera. Why is this important to tonight's conversation? It means that our city planning and engineering staff are fully aware of how precarious the current traffic conditions are on 21st Street as we've been saying all along. So much so that they're actively pursuing a large grant from the state to redesign and rebuild part of it. Citizens opposed to Estover Terrace have been citing deep concerns about traffic problems on 21st. Based upon their experiences as daily users, these accounts have been true, accurate and potent for sure. But the proof of those concerns is right in front of us when city staff have actively pursued a rebuild citing their own concerns, no doubt, about safety in this sensitive school zone. To be sure, these grant monies may never be awarded with state financial pressure from COVID and a tanked economy. Any promise city staff makes of a reconstruction project is optimistic at best. The key point here is that city staff have silently shared the feeling of the concerned citizens of the city. The 21st Street is unable to function under current traffic stressors, let alone the added stressors of 130 to 150 unit development to be loaded onto 21st. Add to this the opinion of Police Chief Eric Atkinson. A year ago, these same developers proposed an 80-unit apartment complex on 21st Street smaller than Estover Terrace by some 50 units. Chief Atkinson recommended the city reject that project and ultimately it was turned down. He said, and I quote, "If that road was repaired, widened and traffic measures were put in at another time, the development may be worth exploring at that time for rezoning. But given the width of the road, I don't think the proposal is a good idea." So, number one, the police chief thinks 21st is unsafe for added traffic. Number two, the city planning and engineering staff thinks 21st Street is unsafe even for its current traffic. And number three, hundreds of petitioning city residents think 21st Street is unsafe currently and will be more unsafe with Estover Terrace. To conclude, all parties except the developer seem to see a problem on 21st Street looming. Any consideration of a housing development that would add traffic to 21st Street should be delayed until a completed street construction project can be evaluated for its effective improvement to traffic safety. Please shelve Estover Terrace. No rezone, no Estover. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I'm gonna let Mr. Idy go to the next individual.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up is Chris, we're gonna lower your hand. Jean Foley, Jean Foley. You have been, you have the mic and you're brought over to speak. Please state your
Okay.
Full name and address, Jean, Gina.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Jean Foley, F-O-L-E-Y, and my address is 913 15th Street Southeast in Menominee. Okay?
Yep, go ahead, go ahead, Jean.
Okay. I want to add to what Chris said. Particularly, I want to remind that many of you were on the city council back in 2013, the last time rezoning and development of this same piece of property was brought to the council. Then, as now, the proposal passed its first city council meeting and the Plan Commission vote. Many Menominee residents attended the final city council, council meeting in person back then and almost all who spoke up were adamantly opposed to the high-density apartment development on land that had been zoned, single-family residential, whom we all bought our homes in the vicinity. I do have to say that many of us who spoke up were not too optimistic about the chances that the city council would vote against the plan at that time, but the proposal did fail to pass. Here we are again, seven years later, facing another high-density apartment development on the same land. You on the council and you, Mr. Nak, as mayor, have already heard from many Menominee residents by phone, by email, by letter and by petition even before this meeting. I sent you all the results of an online survey, which you'll find included in your packets for the meeting. More than 300 people signed that petition. Every single one opposed the rezoning and the high-density apartment development plan and were seriously concerned about the increased traffic on both ends of the new through street that would link Main Street and Wilson Street via 17th Avenue on one end and 21st Street by the middle school on the other. Several Plan Commission members waved off our petition results, saying that most signers were probably near neighbors of the development or not even Menominee residents. 260 of the petition signers listed their full names and provided full addresses within Menominee. More than half of the signers live more than a mile from the proposed development. Less than 30% of us live within three blocks. Also, 39% of the 260 local signers have at least one child attending Oakwood Elementary and Menominee Middle School. And by the way, most of those parents who initially planned to speak against the proposal at tonight's city council meeting are instead right now attending a Menominee School District meeting about COVID-19 concerns with plans for reopening Menominee schools. It's too bad they had to choose between expressing their COVID-19 concerns at that meeting and their concerns about their children's safety getting to and from school if this development adds hundreds of cars a day to the traffic by their schools. The developer's representative, Trevor Bolin, was quoted in last week's Dunn County News in an interview saying that "This development plan brings low-income and affordable housing to Menominee," and that's a quote. That is not true. Rents were quoted in the $1,000 to $1,200 a month range for one, two and three-bedroom apartments. Many of us who own homes in Menominee have monthly mortgage payments far less than these rents. The developer and the project engineer who works for the for-profit Cedar Corporation were the only two non-commissioners who spoke for the project at the Plan Commission meeting three weeks ago. Neither of them lives in Menominee. All 17 of us who spoke against the proposal via Zoom audio were adamantly against the proposal. Yet the proposal passed with only one no vote, which is why we're here tonight. We are, who are speaking here tonight, whether in person or virtually, hope that our city council members will listen to us and not just the people who will profit from this poorly planned project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jean.
Mr. Mayor, if we could just take a pause, I'm gonna, I'm just, I'm gonna lower Jean's hand and then I'm gonna try to bring Eric over. See if I can promote him over. One of our council members is listening in as an attendee at this time. I tried, it's not letting me do that.
We're still here, we're just having technical difficulty. We'll be, we're moving forward here in a second.
You could do that, have him try it again. Eric, if you can hear us, we're gonna resend the panelist connection to you via email so you can come in as a panelist. We're gonna allow you to talk here, Eric. Can you?
Randy. Randy, this is Eric, Sutherland.
Yep, we can all hear you, Eric. But we're gonna
I don't have, I don't have computer access, so I have to do this via phone.
Well, I'm gonna leave you, I'm gonna leave you right here. I'm gonna try to, I can't change your name. I think we can do this, Eric. So we got you in as nine, four, six, three, that's your last four. I can't, I can't rename you, so we'll leave you in there as a council participant. And then I think, Mr. Mayor, the next up is Joan.
Okay, very good. Joan, if you could give us your name and your address and you are next up. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, my name is Joan Pugialis. It's P-O-U-G-I-A-L-E-S. And what else did you wanna know?
What's your address, Joan?
Address, 916 15th Street Southeast.
Okay, thank you. You're coming through loud and clear. Go ahead, please.
Great. Okay, well, I just wanna say that the city has a great comprehensive plan with which I agree in almost every way because it shares my vision for a livable community. However, the Estover Terrace proposal doesn't even come close to complying with the vision shared in that plan. First, it allocates only 12% of proposed units to owner-occupied housing while the comprehensive plan requires 70%. Second, it does not follow a traditional neighborhood development design plan, which the comprehensive plan encourages. Third, it calls for more R3 multi-family zoning, whereas the comprehensive plan calls for less R3 zoning and more R1, R2 and R4 zoning. And fourth, it proposes 156 new units, whereas the comprehensive plan anticipates an increase of 46 housing units per year. Considering that we've already gained 53 units and 171 beds with the Heights developments and Chef Check is continuing to build, including 18 new one-bedroom units this year and there's other development going on as well, this all calls into question the need for such a big development as this. The housing being proposed is also not the housing that is needed per city planning staff. During the spring 2020 housing forums, they reported that Menominee had a low-income housing gap and a high-value homes housing gap, but there was a surplus of affordable housing for people making $35,000 to $70,000. And yet, that is precisely the group that Estover Terrace is geared to. This development simply does not respond to our community's needs. If the city approves this proposal despite the fact that it is at odds in so many ways with the city's well-thought-out comprehensive housing plan and its own research on our housing needs, how can we ever again trust that our city government is being honest with us and pursuing our interests rather than letting developer after developer decide what our community's interests are? Because that's what it looks like. We have brought at this point, time and again, in our interactions with city government, but have yet to receive any kind of an explanation, much less a response that justifies the continual strain from the comprehensive plan. To be clear, I am not opposed to development in general. I am opposed to this specific development plan, which is not responding in any way to our most urgent housing needs. The council needs to address those needs, our low-income housing needs first. You should get a community conversation going, tap all of the resources that your citizens can bring to bear and include the community earlier on in any future development discussions. When you get specific, people will show up. Clearly, you can see that by the attendance tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joan. You came through loud and clear. And with that, we're gonna move on to the next speaker. If there's somebody else, Mr. Idy, if you wanna pick the next speaker, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We're just going to move Joan over. And the next one I have up is Julie Bestin. Julie Bestin, we moved you over. You have the mic. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Julie Bestin and I live at 1217 9th Avenue East. So in addition to living in the east side neighborhood, I also have a daughter that goes to Menominee Middle School. Like others, I'm arguing against this proposal for a variety of reasons, but in my comment, I'd like to focus on the fact that this conflict is entirely unnecessary because there's no need for this development in this location. The Housing Affordability Report from January of this year and calculations from Cedar Corporation in 2018 indicate that there's room on land that's already zoned R3 for between 340 and 800 more units with no need to give up our desirable single-family zones. The affordability report also says, and I quote, "The number of existing and potential lots available for residential development far surpasses the projected housing needs shown in the city's comprehensive plan," end quote. So land space is not the limiting factor for our housing. This rezoning is completely unnecessary. And even if the land were needed for multifamily developments, which again, it isn't, the proposal still fails to address the housing needs of the community. As Joan indicated, Cedar Corp- As Joan indicated, Cedar Corp presented their housing gap analysis and identified a need for low-income housing and for high-value homes. This proposal fails to address either of those needs. The rents are far above fair market value and much too high for low-income families. And we have exceedingly few details on the handful of homes that might potentially be built at the end if the developer actually followed through with Phase Five or whatever it is. I truly believe the developer has overinflated the value of this cookie-cutter development that's a virtual clone of their existing developments. The minimal value addition over, of overpriced apartments is far outweighed by the negative impacts it will have. And I urge you as city leaders to honestly consider this proposal with the city's comprehensive plan and the housing meetings from the beginning of this year in mind. Thank you.
Okay, um, let's see, was that Justin? Thank you, Justin. Julie? Oh, Julie, I'm sorry. Thank you, Julie. Um, Mr. Idy, next speaker, please.
Uh, virtual meeting, we have Leslie Norris. Uh, Leslie Norris, we've opened up your mic, and you were able to speak.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you to Mayor Knack and to the city council members. Um, I wanted to say that I agree with every single point that the previous speakers made and, um, would reinforce all of their thoughts and all of the facts that they researched. The only thing that I would want to add right now is, uh, a couple of things. One is, if you do this rezoning, and the project, for whatever reason, does not go forward, the rezoning still stands, which opens it up to any sort of development down the line, whether it's this project or something else. So I think you need to take the rezoning of this area quite seriously. And the reason I bring that up is, we are living in unprecedented times. Um, I know many of us don't want to look at any of that, but we are living in a pandemic of epic proportions, and none of us have a crystal ball. None of us know what our economic situation is going to be. All of us know we have been affected economically in the last six months with the pandemic, and we know we're not done. So to even contemplate the building of a high-density, unnecessary development during this pandemic, to me, is absolutely irresponsible. We don't know if we'll have enough jobs in the Menominee area in the future when this is done to even have people be able to afford the twelve hundred dollar a month rent, which, as Julie mentioned, is not affordable housing and is not fair market housing. And from the previous speakers, that is what we need in this area. We need affordable, low-income housing. That is where we are struggling in this community. And I do believe that is where we are going to be continually struggling, struggling as we go forward with our time recovering from this pandemic. So I think this is, I think it's the wrong development for the wrong land at the wrong time. And I think any decision going forward on this at this time is not listening to the citizens of Menominee and is not looking out for the best of our community. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Um, again, Mr. Idy, if you want to bring up the next speaker.
Uh, the next hand I see is Julia. Uh, Julia, we have moved you over, your mic is open. Could you please state your full name and address? And you probably have to unmute yourself, Julia.
Julia Gobbin, um, nine-three-four Dancing Oak Circle. So I think, and, and all these people have made very wonderful in bits of information into what's needed. Um, what I'm saying is the location of this extremely large development in a quiet residential area is problematic on many levels. And what we haven't looked at a lot is the cost of this apartment, but it is being brought up now. There are multiple smaller two-bedroom, four-plex apartment groups on the east side now. These are renting for anywhere from six twenty-five to eight hundred dollars per month. These are not subsidized or government housing, but nice locally-owned units with garages. They are mostly occupied by middle-income professionals and many senior citizens. We don't need more large, expensive developments that are unaffordable to the average resident. Many homeowners have already stated that these apartment rents are higher than their mortgages. What is needed are more small complexes, similar to those already in place, that will be afforded, affordable to the growing senior population. Menominee has already allowed large apartment complexes to be built on the west side with prices that are well above the average ones for the community. This is raising the expected rent overall for Menominee. What will happen when all of these new apartments appear and the average rent in the area increases from seven to eight hundred to a thousand to fourteen hundred? This is the direction that Menominee is going. This will cause a lot of senior citizens to get displaced. Nice apartments, these are not subsidized HUD or Section Forty-two apartments, will be priced so that the average worker cannot afford them and seniors cannot pay these rents with their social security. They will have to move into subsidized apartments or move out of Menominee. This is already happening in Menominee and driven by large developments like this. Please don't let this happen to this beautiful, quiet town. This mega complex is not appropriate or safe for this beautiful historic area of Menominee. If a small apartment group is allowed in addition to the residential homes, it should be done by a local builder who will be sensitive to the needs of the community and senior population and not just trying to bring in a lot of high-priced apartments for big profit. What is proposed is going to damage this area for a long time. I implore you to look at this carefully and not allow this to happen to this community and the residents of this area. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Julia, and you came through loud and clear. Um, I guess with that, anybody else from the call-in? Randy, I think we've got some people here internally that would like to speak.
Uh, no hands up on the virtual at this point, so, um, I guess, Mr. Mayor, if you want to take somebody from the audience.
Okay, we'll take somebody from the audience. If you'd like to give us your name and address, please, go ahead. Oh, turn your mic on, too.
Trevor Boland, thirty-four twenty Mall Drive, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. The city of Menominee has invested significant resources and energy in assessing the housing gap and needs. There were a series of community meetings in twenty-twenty to define and litigate the need for housing along with conceptual plans for future vacant land and types of housing. The housing supply in Menominee is insufficient to meet current needs and demands in every income category and housing type. The approval for Estover Terrace involves around three factors that councillors of the city of Menominee, city council, will have to weigh as being the most important to the entire city of Menominee and their constituents. Additional supply of affordable housing in the city of Menominee by leveraging density, number one. Number two, additional supply of affordable housing in the city of Menominee, but financial support will be required on the back of taxpayers or funding reallocated from other projects' infrastructure. Or three, disregard the need of affordable housing and the housing gap that exists in the city of Menominee and cast your vote in favor of concerned citizens opposing the development. Estover Terrace, who had developed infill land that was certified as an opportunity zone in two thousand and seventeen in which to stimulate development. The preliminary plat- and site plan attempted to be compatible to surrounding neighbors via single-family and twin homes on the west side off of Seventeenth Street and Eleventh Avenue and to resist transition to multifamily on the east side of development. In total, one hundred and fifty-six units comprised of one hundred and thirty-six units of multifamily, fourteen twin homes, and six single-family residences. The developers expressed their willingness in which to meet with local neighbors to explain and answer questions pertaining to the development. Two meetings were held on June eighth and June seventeenth. In addition, the developers empathetic to concerns noted during the Plan Commission public hearing on June twenty-second. The six factors expressed, number one, increased traffic, two, density, three, planned multi-phase development, four, affordable housing, five, zoning land should remain as R-one, and six, other multifamily parcels are available for development. For the first one, increased traffic. Multiple access points exist to minimize the impact of additional traffic and stub to south of property line to connect Derlin Road for the city of Menominee Strategic Development Plan. The Wisconsin DOT traffic count data shows the average annual daily traffic on nearby streets, Thirteenth Street southeast between Wilson Avenue and Main Street East to be eight hundred ninety vehicles a day, Main Street East at Ninth Street East intersection to be fourteen hundred vehicles a day, Twenty-first Street at intersection of Snyder Avenue of Southeast to be eighteen hundred vehicles, and Derlin Road directly south of Estover Terrace to be twenty-five hundred vehicles. Based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Report, apartments generate approximately seven vehicle trips per day and point seven vehicle trips per peak hour. A hundred and fifty-six dwelling units of seven trips per day is a thousand ninety-two trips daily and a hundred and nine point two vehicles per peak hour. The threshold for Seventeenth Street southeast and Twenty-first Street East, a two-lane with no left turn, is eleven thousand per day based on the Highway Capacity Manual, meaning this project is not anticipated to generate traffic on Seventeenth Street southeast or Twenty-first Street East or their ancillary streets beyond its capacity limitations. The maximum vehicles per hour per U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration is seven hundred and fifty vehicles per hour for a collector street. As noted previously tonight, the city of Menominee recently applied for a community block grant to upgrade Twenty-first Street. The project cost is approximately one point one-four million with a requested grant share of seven hundred and sixty thousand, which would reconstruct the street from Derlin Road, County Trunk J, to the middle school driveway and would include a ten-foot wide trail storm sewer water main looping and sanitary sewer construction. In regards to density, based upon the proposed development plans and total unit count of a hundred and fifty-six units versus two-hundred, twenty-nine point oh-five acres would be a density of five point six per acre inclusive of the conservancy area. This density is in line with other proposed and approved developments considered by the city of Menominee. For example, the development north of, north of male health clinic systems by Red Cedar Street, Fourth Avenue North, Twenty-first Street North, and Twenty-fourth Street North, consisting of thirty-two point three-eight acres and a hundred and ninety-eight units, has a density of six point one-one units per acre. This area consists of a mix of three twenty-four units, one twelve, one ten, two eights, one six, nineteen fourplexes, two duplexes, and single-family homes. The city of Chippewa Falls has a development with soda shores, including green space and stormwater retention, that has a density of seven point one-five. Per review of the City of River Falls Comprehensive Housing Needs Analysis and Zoning Regulation, high-density residential is defined as eight point one to twelve units per gross acre. The city of River Falls Planning Commission City Council has approved the Depot, twenty-eight units dwelling units per acre, Aberdeen Place, eight point four dwelling units per acre, University Falls, seventeen dwelling units per acre, Campus View South, thirteen dwelling units per acre, thirteen hundred South Main Street, thirty-one dwelling units per acre, and Peregrine Terrace, ten point nine dwelling units per acre. Apartments are homes, not an invasion. Low-density projects such as Estover Terrace help support local retail businesses that depend heavily on foot traffic, like hardware stores, bakeries, restaurants. Local retail that households can ask, access without driving helps reduce greenhouse gas emissions, the largest driver of climate change and air pollution. Per an article from ApartmentList.com, "The increasing importance of multifamily construction. As population grows, new residential construction plays a crucial role in maintaining the affordability of housing. Our nation's housing stock, stock has historically been dominated by single-family homes, but over time, multifamily housing has begun to make an ever-increasing share. New multifamily housing is well-positioned to address these problems. Adding new housing units close to the urban core can help soften rent growth, and dense transit-oriented construction can reduce commute times and promote sustainability. Furthermore, increasing the housing stock allows successful cities to grow, giving broader access to their opportunities. Multifamily construction acts as a stimulus to local economies and plays a crucial role in allowing our nation's cities to grow inclusive and sustainable ways." Plan unit phase development, number three. The project will be a multi-year project and phased to ensure supply does not outpace demand and leverage multifamily units in which to subsidize the twin home, single-family development. Menominee Development LLC is partnering with CNM Home Builders from Eau Claire. CNM, CNM has been building in the Chippewa Valley for over twenty years. CNM has tentatively agreed to build a model single-family home and twin home in the fall of twenty-twenty. Depending upon land acquisition costs, several building plans that they have consisting of the Harrison, the Carter, the Half Kennedy, the Metalview, range from twelve hundred and sixty-six square feet to thirteen hundred and fourteen square feet, which would be listed for approximately two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty thousand per home. In addition, twin homes would either be the Jefferson, the Princeton, or the Kennedy, ranging from eleven hundred and fifty-six to thirteen hundred and four square feet and be listed for a hundred and eighty-five to a hundred and ninety-nine thousand square feet. As it relates to affordable housing, number three. Estover Terrace does provide affordable housing to the proper. The Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as total housing and related expenses that comprise no more than thirty percent of gross household income. Households spending more than thirty percent are considered cost-burdened, and households spending more than fifty are considered severely cost-burdened. Affordable housing is income of households earning at or below eighty percent of the area median income, or AMI. Workforce housing, another term utilized increasingly in recent years to gain support, adjusts the supply of housing for moderate and middle-income households. The construction of the term is clearly indicate, indicates employed persons. This term, term comes with limitations, as is typically defined as housing that is affordable to households earning between sixty and a hundred and twenty percent of the county median income. Please keep in mind, as we've talked about affordable housing, there are four categories. Extremely low income, zero to thirty percent. Very low income, thirty-one to fifty percent of the average median income. Low income, also known as income insecure, fifty-one to eighty percent of the median income, of which this proposed development achieves thirty percent of the units in that income category. And moderate income, also known as workforce housing, eighty to a hundred and tw- sixty to a hundred and twenty percent. Again, the rest of the units in Estover would be considered workforce housing. Per WIDA, Wisconsin Housing Economic Development Association, "The shortage, shortage of affordable workforce housing in rural Wisconsin poses far-reaching challenges. Access to safe, affordable shelters is fundamental to the sustainability of our communities because housing provides a foundation for public health, economic well-being, and environmental stewardship. If Wisconsin is to thrive, rural communities require effective tools and support to develop affordable workforce housing." Per the U.S. Census, the AMI for Dunn County is fifty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-eight. Albeit, this project does not meet the needs of extremely low or very low income, which is difficult to achieve without a private-public partnership. At the proposed market rents, Estover multifamily units will be filling housing for low income, AKA income insecure, moderate income, AKA workforce housing, at twenty-nine point four-one and a hundred percent effectively. As a backdrop, Menominee Development LLC has been working diligently with the city of Menominee staff and city council to devise plans that are win-win. The developers made concessions in removing multifamily unit from the original plan submitted for review on March seventeenth. Twin homes removed, removed for the benefit of including single-family units. The density requested in the original DDP submission is needed in which to support the overall project unless other concessions are made. Currently, the estimated cost of each single-family lot is fifty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars after cost allocation for land, conservancy roads, stormwater retention, conservancy improvements and infrastructure. Based upon the rolling twelve-month vacant single-family sales in Menominee of twenty-nine, three, twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars plus estimated closing costs and holding costs, an estimated loss of two hundred and ten thousand is anticipated. Currently, the estimated cost of each twin home lot, of which were seven, is sixty thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars after cost allocation for loan, for land, conservancy roads, stormwater retention, conservancy improvements and infrastructure. Based upon previous sales of thirty-five thousand dollars for twin homes in this market, is an estimated loss of two hundred and forty-five thousand. The developer is willing to incur a loss of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the benefit of single-family and twin, twin homes in this. But that also means to trade off his density. In order to meet the expectations of the investor and requirements of the Plan Commission, I ask for consideration and selection of the following options. Approval of the final development plan and rezon request for Estover Terrace- Approval of the final development plan and rezone request for Astover Terrace estimated to the planning commission consisting of 136-unit multifamily, which consists of five eightplexes, eight twelveplexes, 14 twin homes, and six single-family homes. The developer requests financial consideration of city council except for the reimbursement of the infrastructure extension from the previous cul-de-sac to the south property line. Per the surveyor, it's approximately 150 linear feet with an estimated cost of 500 bucks per linear foot or 75,000. Or, two, approval of a final plot plan and request for Astover Terrace as revised to 120 units, which would consist of nine eightplexes, four twelves, 14 twins, and six single-family homes. Again, the financial consideration for the extension of the road. With a request of the city council to provide additional financial support, as noted in your packet, or the city council acknowledging the monthly rents on various unit types would increase by $100 per month, which basically eliminates all 72 units of affordable housing for income insecure. That's 60% of the units. Or three, approval of the final development plan and rezone request for Astover Terrace as revised per plan commission to 104-unit multifamily development, which consists of 13 eightplexes, 14 twin homes, six family homes. Again, the developer requests your financial consideration of the road extension. In addition, or city council provide financial support as noted in the packet, or city council acknowledges monthly rents on various unit types would increase by $200 per month. The impact of this is elimination of the entire 104 units of any type of affordable housing for income insecure or 100% of the units. I ask for your support in a motion to approve the final development plan and rezone request for Astover Terrace. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. Mr. Eddie, go ahead. Do we have anybody calling in? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we do. On the virtual thing I see next up is James Miller. James Miller, we opened up your microphone. If you could give your full name and address, please.
Okay, my name is James Miller, 1414 10th Avenue East. Am I coming through?
Yes.
Okay. Gosh, I don't know how many times Trevor gets to read his canned script to you people. It seems kind of unfair. He gets to come to all the meetings, we just come to the one. I don't think he's changed his script at all. He's reading generic remarks about rural Wisconsin needs. Folks, we don't live in rural Wisconsin, we live in Menominee. And you've heard very specific remarks from the citizens of Menominee, not fill in the blank name of community here. You've heard very specific remarks, very specific concerns. Those concerns were raised at the meetings with Trevor and, you know, our mics were on, but he hasn't changed his script. We made remarks at the planning commission meeting and he hasn't changed his script. He loves to flood you with a bunch of numbers and densities and decimal places, perhaps suggesting the 21st isn't a problem right now. You know, we've got a long way to go before it's as dense as I-94 at rush hour. But you have heard comments from people, real people in the real community about genuine concerns. And before, you know, your eyes glaze over from all the numbers, I would refer you back to the pointed and I think very eloquent comments made by Chris and Jean and Joan and Julie and Leslie. One last thing I want to say that I mentioned to the planning commission. Trevor talks about a 2017 targeting of this parcel for development, that it's one of our high priority areas for development. And that's why this development, whether it's good or bad, is going to land on that parcel. And I challenge that. I absolutely challenge that. The city's development plan, 2016 to 2036, talks about which areas of the city should in fact be a focus for development. Among the things in the city's plan says, well, obviously want to stay away from wetlands, slopes, and wooded areas. The meadow, that's the real parcel that we're talking about here, has slope, it has wetlands, it has woodlands. It's just that the city's land use map somehow seems to have forgot to put those in. It looks like a big blank space on the city's land use map. I don't know if that's, you know, in oversight or if there's something more nefarious going on there. But this is not a big blank spot that, my God, let's get there and put something up. This is an area that is not, in its current status, a wetland, a sloped area, a wooded meadow that meets the city's priority for development. So maybe it's some other part of the east side that he's trying to slide into the 2017, 2017 targeted area. He can't be talking about the meadow. So I would say again, that particular parcel, I'm very suspicious that anyone would identify that, given how many other parcels don't have issues with wetlands and wood and slope is any kind of target, other than, you know, somebody bought it and they want their money for it. So I would refer you again as a city council to the body that responds to us, to the we the people part here. And I guess you can understand our frustration that we keep making observations and comments and we don't seem to be stakeholders here. It seems to be entirely between developers and the people that are on a first-name basis with, on the planning commission. But we are the citizens of Menominee and you've seen petitions, you've heard eloquent arguments, and you are our, our last hope, Obi-Wan Kenobi, to listen to the voice of the people of Menominee and to vote as representatives of the people. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, James. Again, we are zooming this meeting. We have individuals here and Randy's got hands at also. So, Mr. Eddie?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The next up person I see is on a cell phone. The last four is 4880, that's 4880. We've turned your mic on. Sir, ma'am, if you could give your name and number, that would be much appreciated. Name and address, that would be much appreciated.
Good evening. My name is Jill Seim. My address is 902 15th Street Southeast in Menominee.
Joan, I hate to interrupt, but I don't know if I got your last name.
Jill. Jill. Seim, yeah, you're coming to a little bit quiet, so maybe you can just talk a little louder.
All right, is this a little better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Jill Seim, 902 15th Street Southeast. Good evening. I want to give a shout out to my friends and neighbor down the street. You know who you are. I just want to say that I think your property is at the end of the rainbow and I'm sorry that your gold is being taken away from you. I want to strongly encourage the city council to take a step back from this project. I don't feel like a holistic viewpoint is being considered. For example, you've heard numerous arguments about traffic. Do you realize that children in the elementary school within one mile and within the middle school two miles, they aren't bused to school? This is where I'd like to see the council pause on the project, work with community members, especially during this time when the future is so uncertain and we're laying out new plans, to consider busing options to help reduce traffic, instead of just plowing through with this decision and not considering the community as a whole. I do want to see the property remain zoned as is. I'm very concerned about once we build, and then what? Just more apartments, more rentals? I know we live in a free market, but without a certain percentage being directly built for very low, extremely low, very financially challenged families, senior citizens, I feel like this board is really missing an opportunity to serve a portion of our population that continually gets looked over time and time again. I don't feel like we can talk about the median income in this town without also addressing the median social security. So those are things I do want you to consider. In addition, there hasn't been enough talk about the pandemic that we're in. I, I attended some of the meetings last year when there was so much discussion about the housing needs in this town. Things do need to change. I, I understand that. But the pandemic has made such a huge impact on the future. This isn't the time for this project. You know, businesses have not only had to change their business plans, but their models in general. I haven't been to my office since March. I've been working from home every day. Now, why would a company come and set up new business, new office space if they don't have to? All employees can work from home. We have to pause on this now. It's just not a good time for this. It's not the right moment in our history to be building such massive projects. Last year, it was a different discussion. This year, the world finds themselves in a new place and we have to stop and, and really think about that. I also want to talk about decisional dissidence. Hello?
Hi, you're still there? Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, I heard a beep. I also want to talk about decisional dissidence. I want to say from the developers that I do acknowledge that the layout, there was an attempt to be more community-friendly with where twin homes and single-family homes were placed. Decisional dissidence, you know, I look at the CBS in town, it's a beautiful building, but I do wish that it was sitting in a different direction on Broadway. I know a lot of people appreciate the bank downtown, but it's a big white elephant. You know, these are things that we can't really tell from paper. We see nice new construction and we think, oh, yeah, that needs to go there. I think if you stand at the bottom of 17th and when, once that is built, we'll regret it. It's a project that was never meant in that space. So I am going to make the bold statement tonight and really encourage you to take out the twin homes, to take out the single-family homes. I think it will make the size of the project in the number range that was proposed by the council even last year. I just think that, you know, it may look like the right size, but it is definitely the wrong fit. The last thing I just want to say is, I'm disappointed to see this project come to the table during a time of social distancing. I think it's a lot, it's unfair to a lot of people. I think that you need to be pretty procedurally in, up in order to understand what's going on in the community. And at a time when we have federal leadership that is just not listening to the citizens, the people in this community should not have to come to their local leadership and use words like, please, don't. I implore you not. Our quality life right now means everything to us. I'm going to ask that you pass on this project, say no to the rezoning, say no to the development. It's not the right moment in time. It's not the right move for the community. It's not the right move for the citizens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was Jill, right? Thank you, Jill. And I guess we have people here in the audience and people with their hands up. So, Mr. Eddie?
Seeing no one from the audience, the next one we have up, Julie Bestin. But Julie, you have already spoken during this public hearing, so I am, we're going to lower your hand for now. And we're going to go to Michelle Rose. Michelle Rose, we've opened up your mic. You're able to speak?
Yeah, this is Michelle Hamilton. I live at 720 15th Street Southeast. I am on the corner of Wilson and 15th Street. And I just want to lend my support to things that have been brought up by Chris and Jean and Joan and Julie, Leslie, Julia, Jim Miller, and Jill. I have attended the earlier meeting with council. I also attended the meeting with the planning commission. And I ask you, I plead with you to please oppose both the Astover Terrace and the rezoning proposal that you have in front of you. And I think everyone's points have been really well-articulated, but what hit me and raised my hand was Jill's point about timing. The timing right now is, is off on this. I hear the need. I want many to be a successful community. I am in the workforce business, if you will. Employment is sort of my, my area of expertise, but this is not completely thought out for our community purposes. As I think Joan said, it goes against some of the comprehensive plan. This is at least the second time, maybe the third, I have heard Jim Miller bring up the error in the city's map that nobody ever addresses, right? That says that this isn't woodland or slope or whatever. Go take a look at the meadow. I walk my dog in it every day. It's sloped, it's wooded. And so, these are the kinds of things that I think we need to spend some time being a little more intentional about and listening to the citizens of your community. I mean, you are our voice and we are coming to you asking for your help to this beautiful historic area of Menominee and we need your support. So I am asking you, please oppose the terrace and the rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Michelle, thank you. And again, we have audience members here and we have others with their hands up. So, Mr. Eddie?
I see Ms. Catherine Dutton. Catherine, we've opened up your microphone. If you could state your name and address, please.
Catherine Dutton, 913 15th Street Southeast. First, I, you can hear me okay?
Yep, you're good now. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd also like to say that I was disturbed by the length of Trevor's comments. We were told by our city council representative that we would have three minutes and that's what many of the previous speakers had planned on. Maybe that wasn't the case, but they were trying to be respectful of everyone's time and I hope that if they raise their hand again, that you will call on them and allow them to speak at length, since the developer was able to do that. I did send an email letter to all you city council representatives expressing my concerns, so I don't want to repeat those. I agree with everything the previous speakers have said, with the exception of not wanting you to eliminate single-family or, or the double-unit housing. If you were to eliminate anything, I'd want it to be the higher-density units. But I appreciate everyone's comments. I've heard the arguments before and Trevor seemed to reference it, that there's a need for more workforce housing in Menominee. I really question that. There are a lot of rental properties available in Menominee. Maybe they're not the kind that many people would want to live in. That seems to be another issue that could be addressed. However, if there is such a tremendous need for workforce housing, I would expect that at tonight's meeting, there would be representatives from some of our big businesses in town, the industries urging you to go forward with this development. If I were an employer and that was my concern, I would see this as a prime opportunity for me to express that concern and have you listen. Many of those CEOs and HR representatives are residents of our community. I'm not hearing them at this meeting. They weren't on the plan commission call. They weren't on the call that was the meeting, the Zoom meeting for hearing from the developer originally. So that makes me question, how, how big is that concern? They're not expressing their, their input to you, which seems to raise that question and I hope you'll take that into account. So, thank you for listening and again, I hope you will especially listen to the hundreds of citizens who express their concerns through the petition.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Just for clarity, yeah, public hearing, you can speak for the length you need to. However, in a public comment portion of our meeting, we are limiting our public comments to three minutes. So, I'm sorry if the, if anybody didn't get that information, but again, public hearing is open and we have individuals here in the room that are liking to speak and we also have people with their hands up. So, go ahead, Mr. Eddie. and we have individuals here in the room that are liking to speak and we also have people with their hands up. So, go ahead, Mr. Idy?
Next on the virtual meeting is Bethany Rizler. Bethany Rizler, we've opened up your microphone. Please state your name and address.
Sure, Bethany Rizler. I live at 1210 Wilson Avenue here in Menominee.
Okay, and if you could talk just a little bit louder, that'd be great.
Sure, okay. Is that better?
Yep, you're good. We got your address and your name, Beth. Hi.
Great. First of all, I just want to thank Mayor Knack and the city council members for taking the time to hear our concerns. I know you guys do a lot for our city and for our community and often appreciation goes unsaid. So just thank you for all that you do. I share many of the concerns expressed by other Menominee residents. I urge you to take these concerns into consideration when you're looking at this plan and making a decision on whether or not to move forward this way. These are residents of Menominee. We live in this town. We bike the roads. We walk the roads. We drive them every day. A developer from another town doesn't spend his days driving these roads and walking these roads. They don't have children in this town. They're not having to worry about the same things that we as residents do. I have two children who attend Menominee Middle School, who would be impacted by this plan. My kids bike and walk to school and I guess my big concerns lie in the safety of adding hundreds of residents, potentially to an area that's already difficult to navigate safely via car or bike or walking. I'm currently missing the SDMA meeting that's going on right now, unfortunately. The discussion about reopening the schools and how that would impact our children. But I felt like this was really important for our community and I wanted to express my concerns and hear from my other residents in the area. There's currently a discussion of busting happening at that meeting. I have some friends who are listening in and sharing information with me from that meeting. It sounds like Joe Zdowski, the superintendent, has mentioned that they will be encouraging families who can accommodate it to drop off and pick up their students or have them walk or bike so that they reduce the number of kids who are on the bus. And we don't know how long this is going to last, of course. So, you know, maybe this wouldn't impact us at this time, but it doesn't mean that this wouldn't last longer. What it means is that there's likely going to be much more traffic on Twenty First, many more kids walking and biking than in previous years. I'd also like to echo something a previous resident said regarding timing. I really think we just need to pause on this, take a step back and really look at what we want to see for our future in this area right now. With the unexpected COVID situation and the unknown, we really, I don't think it's, it's the right time to make big decisions like this. I ask that you listen to your residents, those that you represent, and just wait. Thanks for your time, council members.
Okay, thank you, Bethany. Bethany Rizler, thank you. And Mr. Idy?
See Derek Traynor. Derek Traynor, we've opened up your microphone, please your name and address and the mic is yours. Derek, perhaps unmute if you're trying to speak. Looks like you're muted.
What is that? Push to unmute?
Should be, looks like he's on a computer or just be hovering over your name there.
Still have you muted there, Derek? We'll have, move on to the next one. You'll have to come back to us, Derek.
Derek, if you are still there and just trying to do it, you surely can try to get back in, raise your hand again if you, oh, there you are unmuted. Go ahead, Derek.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, very good.
Sorry, my computer froze up there for just a second. Thank you for taking the time to hear all of your citizens' concerns and comments. My name is Derek Traynor. I live at N 5297 110th Street. And I'm not going to comment tonight on whether the location of this development is the right or wrong choice. But I do want to put my comments on the plan itself. You know, looking at the Eastover Terrace Plan, it's a combination of single family home. There is a low income component to it and also a mixed use, or I'm sorry, multifamily component as well in the moderate income to workforce housing component. I think the plan itself is a good plan. And I think it's something that the city of Menominee should be excited about as far as the makeup of the plan. Again, I'm not going to comment on whether this is the right or wrong location, but I do think that this is a plan that would be good for the city. I think it provides the citizens of, of Menominee with some low income housing that's desperately needed. I think it also supplies the city of Menominee with some quality housing. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, Derek, thank you. And Mr. Idy, next?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We're going to move Derek over. Lower his hand. The next one up is Mr. Bill Albright. Bill, if you could state your name and address and you have the floor.
Yeah, council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks for your time. It's, I've been on the meeting since we started here, listening to it and taking in the comments and so on. And a few things to note is that Trevor has done a great job stating the facts. I mean, it's very important to, to think back to what are the facts? What are we after? What's best for the city? And then to move forward. I think it's also important to look at the track record and who is the developer. And, and I think you all know me. I mean, we've, we've done a lot of stuff in the city of Menominee over the years. We're not an outside developer that does not have a feel for Menominee. We do own units. I did live in Menominee for 12 years. I'm very familiar with the area, very familiar with Twenty First Street. We currently own three of the eight plexes on Twenty First Street that are well received in the community, plus some over there off of Nicholas Drive. So, we're not outside developers, we're inside developers. We see a need, we try to fill it. This is, we have come back, you know, with a different plan, with a different location, because we do see a need. If we didn't see a need, we wouldn't come back. We're trying to help the community. We think we're, we're doing the right thing for the community. Time has not stopped during COVID. Time moves on. People get hired. People need jobs. People need housing. And that's where we fill that gap. We're excited to be in the city. We're excited to keep, you know, to, 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 to keep kind of, you know, that drive moving, that income stream coming in for the city, that, that tax base. I mean, time, like I said, time has not stopped. So, you know, I, I employ you, you know, I reach out to you to do the right thing for the city, to look at what the need is, to look at what we've done, to look at our track record and, and improve this development. We're excited about it and then we hope and, and think that you should be too. So, thank you for your time.
Oh, before you go, could I get your address too, please?
Yeah, it's 7663 161st Street in Chippewa Falls.
Got that. Okay, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And we have an audience participant here standing to the microphone and she would state her name and address. We could have her speak.
It's very difficult to speak with a mask on. Is everybody all right?
You're welcome.
If I take it off?
Absolutely.
All right. My name is Heidi Wilson and my address is 1411 Main Street in Menominee. And first thing I want to say is Trevor, Bill, everybody who has come into this project, you don't come into projects like this without the intent of fulfilling a need. You heard a need, you were attempting to do that. And I very much appreciate that. My position with this is that living on Main Street, even though I've lived in rural area of Menominee for twenty, almost 25 years, I recently purchased my house just last year on Main Street. And in the meantime, when I purchased my house, I was then informed, hey, now you get to pay for the expansion of the road. And that is fine, because I would have come here and said, I think that is definitely something that our community needed. In a lot of ways, I felt like a transplant. I moved here, I grew up in Ames, Iowa. And the reason that I bring that up is because it's super interesting. You know, the Development Committee gets to submit to you guys all these statistics. And I have a whole bunch of things written down, positives and negatives, trying to weigh out as a community member. What will this be positive for us and what is going to be negative for us? And then I'm thinking back of, I grew up in Ames, Iowa. It is leading of US Agricultural, USDA, first computer, international students, university setting, writes McDeb in the Midwest, kind of like Menominee, very, very similar to Menominee. When I moved to Menominee, it was super difficult for me. It was a culture shock. We don't have a lot of the same cultural opportunities that I had in Ames, Iowa. And a lot of people think, oh, corn and hogs. You know, that is a lot of the thinking of the Midwest. In the 25 years that I attended Stout, I got my undergraduate, I got my master's degree. I'm an entrepreneur. I have chosen to work in nonprofits, to work with low income, and now to be part of the Menominee community. This is huge to me. And I want to see this community grow and be amazing. So, when I was looking at the cost comparisons, when we're looking at a comparison of River Falls to Menominee, the housing in River Falls, $235,000 for a typical house. Menominee, $170,000. That's a big difference. They're commuting. Yes, there's a university there. But it's not the same community as what we have here. Chippewa Falls is closer, but then I look at Ames. 65,000 people are in Ames. They have 1.5% of none, of no employment. We want that, right? That's the direction we want Menominee to go to. And their home is 183,000 compared to our 175,000. We're very similar in a lot of ways. Do we necessarily need to be bringing in multifamily complexes? Or can we think about, you know, townhouses? Or something where they walk out and people are investing in staying in our community? When I come from Iowa and I come from a wonderful experience, I've chosen to stay here in Menominee. I want to continue to stay here. And this is a good development. It's not a bad development. And the process of development comes with, anything that any of us do in business means we have to do the steps to get there. You guys did the steps. But I think what hurts us as community members is we were not part of those steps. We weren't asked at the beginning, hey, this is what we would like, or can we have a piece of this? Suddenly, all of us are coming to these committee meetings going, oh, I just don't want it. Well, instead of not just wanting it, how about we get to be part of it? So what I would ask of you, can we shelve this? Because of COVID, because of all these other things. Can we think of other ways that maybe this plot of land could be used that is still profitable to Menominee? And then maybe also help this development be somewhere else or modify it? Where, is there any hurt to just hold off a little bit? To get some input to how we could make it fully integrated into our community? So that's what I would ask. And thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you, Heidi. Thank you for being here tonight, too. Mr. Idy?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We have, next up on the virtual is Mr. Dave Nelson. Dave, we've opened up your microphone. The floor is yours. If you give us your name and address.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Council, council members. This is Dave Nelson. I'm the president of Vets Plus. And I live at 2836 Whisper Court, apartment number seven. So I rent in the city of Menominee and have for the last five years. So I'm pretty familiar with the available housing in Menominee and the lack of good rental properties in Menominee. I personally am not going to live in a college rental, so that limits me to very few choices in the city of Menominee. But as I speak, as I listen to many of the speakers here tonight, you know, one thing that I would like to say is, timing is crucial. Menominee is a manufacturing hub. We're really blessed with a lot of manufacturers in this town. And business is booming. You know, you can't make product from working at home. So if you drive by a Vets Plus parking lot, you drive by 3M, Conagra, Cardinal Glass, Anderson Corporation, those are all manufacturers. They're working three shifts, two, three shifts. We're trying to add a second shift at our facilities. And I think one of the, I think the Greater Menominee Development Corp. shared some slides with some data on job openings in the city of Menominee. I believe there's over 200 open positions right now in the city of Menominee. So it means the employers in Menominee can't find enough workers. And I can tell you that Vets Plus cannot find enough workers. So we need affordable worker housing. And affordable housing means higher density. The way you lower the price is you put more units on the same piece of property. And higher density requires city services. You have to have city sewer and water to do higher density. So that means if we're going to have affordable worker housing, it's got to be somewhere in the city limits that has city sewer and water. So, I'm not going to comment on the location. I'll leave that up to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's what they're paid to do. They're the experts. As far as the traffic concerns, I'll leave that up to the Public Works Department as well as Planning and Zoning, because that's what they get paid to do. But, you know, in my opinion, no is not an option. I think your options here are to find a way to yes, whether it's in this spot, in a different spot, whether you need to change the plan. But to say no to somebody that's willing to invest $13 million into our community and increase the property tax base by over $350,000 a year and provide workers to help our manufacturers continue to grow, I think we need to find a way to say yes to that, because what's going to happen if we say no, where's 3M going to expand? Is it going to be in Menominee if they don't have workers? No, they're going to, they're going to expand in another community. Where's Vets Plus going to expand if we can't get workers? We're going to be forced to expand in another community. That's just the plain truth of the matter. So, if you've got a good plan, you've got a good developer that you've worked with before, who's already been in the community for a long time, you need to find a way to say yes to the project. And thank you for hearing me.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Looks like we have an in-house speaker. So, we're going to go to speaker here at our podium. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Dan Osterman. My mailing address or physical address is E 5346 732nd Avenue, Menominee. I'm the president of the Greater Menominee Development Corporation. Our roots go back to the early 70s when we helped facilitate, in collaboration with the city and 3M Corporation, to bring them as one of our most treasured employers to our community. So we've got a long heritage with this community. And I'm pretty proud of the relationship we have with government leadership as well as the leadership of our employment base. We recently surveyed our industrial sector. Our sample size was 19 employers. Smallest employment level was a single person. Our largest employment level was over 1,200 employees. So, pretty broad spectrum. Of those 19 employers that we surveyed, they currently employ just under 3,800 individuals. By 2025, those same employers are projecting a 12% increase in their employment level. That clearly points towards a need for housing to help support that level of demand for employment here in our community. When we surveyed our respondents, these are some quotes. There were some quotes as part of a package that city councils received. But these are quotes from employees of these employers that were part of our survey. Difficulty finding good affordable housing. Housing stock of all types is very limited. Limited single family homes available. Rental property, high demand but low Rental property, high demand but low supply. Healthy and affordable housing is needed. And there was even one employee that said that he was the 15th person in line waiting for a single-bedroom apartment in Menominee. There's obviously a high demand for quality affordable housing. The need for new development continues to grow. Existing employers and potential employees prefer to live near where they work. However, neighborhoods are concerned about not developing in my backyard or nearby. And I got to say, with my responsibility and the area that I cover of Western Wisconsin, simply the reputation of Menominee is not open for business. And I take that very personally. That is why we need to put forth support in this housing and future housing developments to help encourage the employment levels that are needed for our existing and soon to be recruited enterprises. The business community believes there's a need for housing, and that was evidenced by the popular Home Suite Menominee program. Our corporation seeded that effort with $100,000. The city of Menominee was quickly behind us, as was every major corporation in this community. City Council, thank you for your support. I'm sure you've had many updates on the success of that program. But tonight, I'm here just to use that as another testimony as to the need for housing in our community and the popularity that it shares with our largest employers. Industry Menominee is going to continue to grow. Local companies will need to expand, as Dave just noted. And we'd like to have them consider expanding in our community. Not consider another community for reasons such as a lack of housing. As Dave also noted, I did a similar search on Indeed. There was over 260 opportunities for employment in our community. To the point where Indeed is not taking on additional employment advertisements for our community because we simply can't fill the ones that we have. So where are these people going to come from? And when they get here, where are they going to reside? I think our City Council and our leadership has has a great responsibility to not only grow in the economics of employment in our community, but support it also with housing. Housing options are critical for our community. Developers have done their homework and feel that there's a need for housing in our community. And that's become apparent with as regular as we're getting proposals as what we've seen here. Housing is tied directly to economic development in our city. And with that, I guess I would open it up if there's any questions.
Thank you, Dan Osterman. We're not doing questions in the public hearing sector of our meeting this evening.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here. Thank you. And we have another person in-house ready to speak. Go ahead. Give us your name and your address, please.
Thank you. My name is Ashley Demuth. My address is E 8948 810th Avenue. I am the CEO for the Menominee Area Chamber. And in 2019, our chamber drafted a letter to the city and the county bringing forth business member concerns regarding housing as it relates to workforce development. Members provided valuable feedback that a lack of housing is hindering the recruitment and employee relocating process. The Greater Menominee Development Corporation Housing and Employment Survey that Dan just mentioned echoed our member comments supporting that additional housing is needed. So just as Derek, we are not necessarily speaking to the location of this development, but we do hear that there is a need for housing in our community. We do know that that is a direct effect on our workforce development, and we hear it daily from businesses. We continue to hear from some of our members that housing is needed to bring employees here, to keep employees here, and to help our businesses sustain. I'm hearing many citizen comments about housing. But from a business standpoint as well, I do encourage businesses to reach forward and talk about how developments such as this can bring employees to our community and really help our community prosper, both from a community standpoint and the businesses. It's great to hear from entrepreneurs such as Heidi and to also hear from many of our community members who work at valuable businesses here in our community. I encourage businesses to continue reaching out and let the City Council know their housing needs and to also keep some of our public entities and their, their larger employers know, such as the Chamber and the Economic Development Corporation and such, of those housing needs as they have employees who are willing to relocate to the community who are not here yet to visit our beautiful Menominee area.
Okay, thank you, Ashley. Again, the floor is open. Mr. Eddy, if you've got somebody, anybody that wants to speak?
We have online, we have Leslie Norris. Leslie, you've already spoken, so we are we are moving on to Nasir.
Nasir, if you can hear us.
I don't think I got him over there.
Oh, hold on.
Standby. Yep.
So again, Leslie, you have spoken already, so we are moving on. And I had Nasir up there, but he must have put his hand down. I don't see his hand up, so I see, oh, there's Nasir. Nasir, we got you moved over. Nasir, your mic is on. If you can unmute, give us your full name and address.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for your time and effort. I know this is some extra hours for all of you. So I'm very thankful for all of you that you are standing and listening and just trying to solve these kind of issues or something. Okay, my name is Nasir.
And before you even get started, I'm going to have you speak a little bit louder and really clear into the microphone. And could you give us your full name and address? Thank you.
I'm trying to close to my computer laptop, actually. Maybe it's okay.
Thank you.
Yes. My name is Nasir, N-A-S-I-R, A-L-I, Ali, 1905 Dairyland Road, Menominee. Okay. So I'm listening this last time I have, I was in the meeting also this time. Thank you for letting me in also. Yeah, I'm agree with the most of the Menominee residents. They have raised some question about density of the population, density of the housing. I think large housing, like multi-stories or three or something like that, I think this is not required at this moment. Yes, we can go ahead and use some like smaller houses, affordable houses. I have seen so many of the, our people are saying less costly housing. So we can go to the route of that, probably make some affordable and reasonable housing in between not too cheap, not too high, something like that. So the word development itself says develop means we have to move forward. We cannot stop thinking. Development is a positive thing. So we should have always be going in the forward direction. Yes, we can rewrite the zoning or whatever we are talking about to comfort most of our citizens. It is their right. I'm agreeing with that. So please try to stay in some like acceptable for all of us. So, and also I agree with the Dave Nelson. So he was, I was listening to him. So this is my comments. I'm agree with the little less density housing. This is my point. And I'm also 1905 Dairyland property, which is next to this big plot. It's about 11 acre lot. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Nasir. Appreciate you calling in. Next, Mr. Eddy?
Mr. Mayor, I see nobody left on the virtual meeting that wants to, wishes to speak. No more hands up. And I don't see anybody in the audience that has not spoken already.
Okay, last call for public hearing. Seeing no one, we're going to close that portion of the public hearing and move on with our second element of the public hearing. That brings us down to 3B Proposory Zoning Request from Trevor Boland Estover Terrace for 29.05 acres currently owned by the Golden Family LLC and Stout University Foundation Incorporated. In the Southeast, one quarter of the Southwest, one quarter in the Southwest, one quarter of the Southeast, one quarter, Section 25, T28 NR 13W, City Menominee from Single Family to Multiple Family Residential, Limited Multiple Family Residential Twin Home and Conservancy District. With that, we will open up the public hearing portion again. You can speak on this. And we are getting on in time. Just remember that be brief as you can, but get your point across. And a lot of this actually probably refers back to the first portion of our public hearing. So with that, we will invite guests to speak. Mr. Eddy?
Mr. Mayor, I see no hands up on this public hearing from the public.
Okay, I don't see anybody here currently in the presence.
I do have, Leslie Norris has her hand up.
Okay, Leslie, go ahead, please.
Leslie, your, your mic's on if you can give your name and address.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Leslie Norris and my address is 1414 10th Avenue East. And I am again speaking to the rezoning issue. My concern is once again that we are in very perilous times and economically unstable times. And if we do go forward with rezoning this land, it is done. It will always then henceforward be multifamily housing. And regardless of whether this development goes forward or another future development goes forward, it would change the traffic, it would change the area. It would be against your original comprehensive plan of using any land that has slope and woodlands and woods and meadow and wetlands. And again, this may or may not be appropriate to what you were, where we are discussing on this. But I did want to, people were discussing about affordable housing again. And I just wanted to say a few things in that looking at a rent affordability calculator for a $1,200 a month two-bedroom apartment, the minimum required is a $25 an hour job. And I know that several people were talking about 3M. And the average, and we're talking average, this is not the usual hourly wage for a 3M employee. The average 3M employee is currently $21.93 an hour. So the average employee of 3M in Menominee could not afford the housing as proposed. And I just want to emphasize that because again, we are in an economic 52 pickups, we're playing 52 pickups. We do not know what's going forward. And my concern is this project going forward with the rezoning, housing being started, not completed, housing being built and sitting there empty. And I'll stop. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. We have a person here this evening that would like to speak, so go ahead.
My name is Heidi Wilson and my address is 1411 Main Street. And just very quickly to add to this is as looking at the development plan that was approved here by the council, some of the wording is that the plan wanted developmental patterns, transportation options, potential land use options, topography as consideration when looking at land use. And in there, there's also reference to the Town of Red Cedar is better and more conducive of future development. Land is desirable to developers. And then looking at topography maps of the area that is being requested. We are looking at realty, location, location, location is number one. And like I had said before, it's not that the development itself is maybe undesirable, but can we look at that slope? A lot of it very well. I would just like to encourage you before voting on this to double check slope 15 to 20% grade, which the council had already determined is right on that iffy zone. Some of it is in that 20% grade depending on what maps you're looking at. So I would just like to encourage looking at some of those things before making that final decision. And if there are other areas, there's lots of plotted undeveloped areas that maybe are closer to places that we could bringing in other people to accommodate for the, the employment pieces of letting them know, hey, this might be closer to Lake Tainer that is getting cleaned up. This is closer to Walmart and shopping. This other land may potentially be on a transportation or a busing route that might be better for employment and employees that are coming in that want to stay in our community. Thank you again.
Well, thank you, Heidi. And I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Eddy.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Next up is Julie Bestin. Julie, we've opened your microphone. The floor is yours. If you give your name and address, please.
I am Julie Bestin. I live at 1217 9th Avenue East here in Menominee. As far as the, the rezoning consideration, I just wanted to emphasize to the City Council that the citizens that spoke previously in support of the development, pretty much all of them hedged that they aren't speaking to this location. Citizens that have spoken in opposition have acknowledged the need for housing in the city, but their concerns are focused on the proposed location as well as the affordability, which is a different issue than the zoning. So I would just strongly encourage the, the City Council to consider that in our comprehensive plan, we said that we wanted more R1, R2, and R4 and less R3. So changing it from R1 to R3 in particular is problematic. And that we have this housing affordability report that says, look, there's lots of land already zoned, R3, that isn't currently developed. And I suspect the developer is going up after this particular parcel because of its price and it just is currently for sale for something that they think is cheap. But I don't think that we should allow that to dictate how we lay out our city. So that's all I want to say right now. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Julie. The time is getting upon us, but we are still in public hearing. 3B Proposory Zoning Request from Trevor Boland Estover Terrace. If anybody wants to speak, go ahead. Randy?
I see Jean Foley up next. Jean Foley, your mic is opened up. If you can give your name and address again, please.
Okay, this is Jean Foley at 913 15th Street Southeast. And specifically related to the rezoning, in 2013, when the rezoning was up for question, one of the people who spoke against the rezoning was Tony Govan, or Govan. Okay, he spoke against the rezoning. Subsequently, because the rezoning did not go through, the land went into a bankruptcy sale. He bought the land. It was listed for about $100,000. He got it for $49,900 after speaking up against the rezoning. Then I know he no longer owns the land. He sold it to his family's corporation, which doesn't seem to be much different than him owning it personally. And now, after speaking against the rezoning himself, he's trying to sell this land at more than triple the price, but it's contingent on the rezoning. This is wrong. And I, you may think that I'm just a naive woman or whatever it is that you think. But if the person who's set to make a huge profit on this land spoke against the rezoning before, there is something wrong with this process. There's also something wrong with this process if you listen to developers, if you listen to the Development Corporation people and you don't listen to the citizens of Menominee that are going to be directly affected by this. And the huge increases in traffic, part of them, if they're coming on the 17th Street and they're going to be going to downtown and UW Stout on either Wilson Road, which is extremely narrow, has no sidewalks and is not made for anything but foot or bike traffic or really one car at a time in one direction. Or Main Street, which you did a big reconstruction project on last year. It is still designated as a bike route. There are bicycles painted in the middle of the, the car traffic streets. There's no bike lane. But a lot of people use that for a bike, right? Bike route. Kids, old people like me, all kinds of people. You aren't considering these things. And if this project goes forward, And if this project goes forward, really, it it it's nothing short of outrageous. And that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, thank you, Jean. Mr. Heidi.
Josh Russler, Josh, we've opened up your mic. You have the floor. You have to unmute, Josh. Go ahead, Josh.
Can see you, Josh, but we can't hear you.
We see his picture and he looks like he had muted. You're muted again now, Josh.
Now you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Want to call in? Yeah, so Josh, we're gonna we're gonna move on. We have somebody in line. If you get it working, figure it out, and in near future, we'll we'll bring you back up. He can call in by phone if you'd like, Josh, if that's easier for you. The next person I see, Mr. Mayor is with the initials J M. J M, we've opened up your microphone. If you can give your name and address, please.
This is Julie Govan and six one three four six hundred and seventieth Street, Menominee, Wisconsin. I am part owner of that land you're discussing, and I want to set the record straight regarding Tony Govan. Tony Govan never owned that land and never has owned that land, and he's not part of the Govan Family LLC. That's all I have to say. I hope the property goes through. Thank you very much.
Okay, Julie, thank you. Mr. Heidi.
Standby, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I'm seeing no hands up for this rezoning public hearing.
Josh, you had your hand up earlier. Do you want another to go with this or you want to try to call in? Do we have a number that you can call in?
Yeah, if you want to raise your hand on the cell phone, it's star nine, star nine. Just hover over your name under panelist if you're on a computer. And again, Mr. Mayor, I see nobody here.
Okay, I'm gonna, if Josh, if you want to call the number, which is
Somebody else got the number.
Somebody got a number? Sorry about that. I know you do good. Here we go. Okay, Josh, if you want to call in real quick at eight five nine six nine three six six five three two again. Eight five nine six nine three six six five three two. Last chance.
And I see one more hand up.
We'll take that hand up. Go ahead, Mr. Heidi.
Bethany, we've opened up your microphone. You have the floor. Please give your name and ad- address.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, man, sorry. This is Josh Russler, twelve ten Wilson Avenue, Menominee, Wisconsin. App on my phone crashed just as you unmuted me last time, so.
Okay, if you can talk a little louder, Josh, that'd be great.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that I am not in support of the rezoning request. I just would refer back to the good adage that a good compromise is when both parties are equally unhappy. I don't think we're quite there yet, so I wouldn't I would urge the council to to keep at the negotiations and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, Josh, hey, um, last chance. I think otherwise it looks like we are ready to move out of public hearing. So at this time, we'll close the public hearing portion and move on with the rest of our meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. That brings us down to public comments. Public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can speak for three minutes or less on agenda items for the evening. And we're going to be pretty swift at this and we're going to keep everybody at a three minute or less time period. So at this time, we'll open up the public comments.
And it's star nine if you're on a cell phone, or you can just hover over your name or under your panelist title, and you should be able to option to raise your hand. I gotta turn Josh off. There you go. Sorry about that.
Okay, last call for public.
We have Julie Bestin.
Okay, Julie, go ahead, please.
Julie, your mic's open. Give your name and address.
Thank you. Once again, I'm Julie Bestin. I live at twelve seventeen Ninth Avenue East. I just wanted to speak in response to some of the developers' comments during the previous period. First of all, traffic, traffic numbers provided, ignore the school zones. The traffic during drop off and pickup includes not only cars and buses, but also children walking and on bikes. I think anyone who thinks about it for a few minutes will agree that we don't want to be anywhere near maximum allowable traffic on twenty first. As far as density, we're not opposed to density in general. And we're not opposed to development in general. We think it's incredibly misleading to suggest that the community's desire to keep the R one zoned land as R one or even R two is unreasonable or anti-development. The community simply recognizes that other land exists that's more appropriate for multifamily development in the city. Trevor also mentioned the phasing and said that they're phased to ensure that the supply doesn't exceed demand and leverage the multifamily units to build the twin and single family homes. Frankly, I and I suspect many other residents are suspicious that the first few phases will get put in and then we'll be right back here when the developers want to put multifamily units on the remaining land. There's not a lot of trust right now between the developer and the local community. And I think that's been abundantly clear in tonight's meeting. Also, I wanted to point out that Trevor used the Dunn County median income rather than the city median income to make it sound like they have more low income housing in their plan than they actually do. The median family income in Menominee is forty one thousand four hundred forty nine dollars, according to the U S Census. Trevor accurately stated that affordable housing means that at most thirty percent of income goes to housing and related expenses. That means to be affordable to a family making the median income, rent plus utilities could be at most one thousand thirty seven dollars a month. His proposal does not meet that. So the developers are trying to make it sound like they're doing us a favor by putting this development in here, but nobody in this area asked for this particular development. I think we've documented that the city's own plans don't call for this particular sort of development and certainly not here. They're not doing this for us. They're not doing this for the city. They're doing this to make money and it's important for us to all to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. And I'm just a gentle reminder, you made it right at three minutes. We're gonna cut people off. We're not letting anybody go after three minutes tonight because we've got a lot of meeting ahead of us. So I'm gonna go ahead and open it up, Mr. Heidi. Is anybody else?
Uh, Jean Foley, your mic's been opened. Uh, name and address.
Okay, Jean Foley, nine thirteen fifteenth Street Southeast. And I know I've spoken twice before, but I would just really like the council members to think about how many people have spoken in favor of the rezoning and development and how many have spoken against it. Those who have spoken for it have been few and been almost exclusively the developers themselves or people that have a stake in this. That land is cheap. Yes, it's cheaper than the piece that was turned down for development on twenty first street a couple of years ago, again, because of the traffic congestion. But just because the land is cheap, we shouldn't sell out our own citizens for a development that's going to be very profitable to the developer because in part of the cheapness of the land, if it's indeed sold, because it's contingent on the rezoning. I think that needs to be considered. The many people who've spoken tonight, almost all of the residents who spoke spoke against the proposal. All right, the people who own homes and live here in Menominee. And I just have to say again that I hope you are listening to everyone and considering where they are coming from and where they're going to. Money isn't everything. Quality of life is huge and I just had higher expectations of Menominee than a project like this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jean. I'm gonna again turn it over to Mr. Heidi.
I see no more hands up, Mr. Mayor, for public comment and nothing in the audience. Say what? There was, I see no hands up. So.
Okay, last call for public comments. And we have a lot of meeting ahead of us. So with that in mind, we're going to close public comments and move forward. It is eight fifty seven. We've been sitting in one spot for about two hours. Does anybody in here? We're good to go? Okay, we're gonna keep on moving. Under unfinished business would be three A, General Development Plan Review of Estover Terrace on a twenty I'm sorry, five A, been corrected on unfinished business five A, which is the General Development Plan Review of Estover Terrace on a twenty nine point oh five acre unplanted parcel lying southeast of the southernly terminus of seventeenth Street East. With that, we'll give a slight update here from staff and then we'll move on to council. So staff, Mr. Heidi.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Let me just bring that same map up that we had up before. Just to refresh the council again, it's been a couple hours and I but I know you're familiar with this development. The the general plan as proposed is what you have on the slide. We showed this at the beginning of the public hearing. The general plan has five eight plexes in it up on the closer eleventh avenue, top of the hill. The middle of the section there kind of as you start going down the hills, but still pretty much up on the top, there's eight twelve plexes. And then we have the twin homes as you follow eleventh avenue towards seventeenth street and the connector going south eventually to Dairyland, but right now just to the property line has six single family homes in it. Again, as a reminder, this did go to the plan commission in accordance with our ordinance on June twenty second. And the plan commission recommended favorably on the P U D is with the condition that the twelve plexes be converted to eight plexes. So the eight twelve plexes would go to eight eight plexes with the plan commission recommendation. The developer has submitted his plan to you. He's he has said he can follow the general plan that's laying out in front of you if you wish. The hundred and fifty six units. But he is asking for seventy five thousand dollars because administratively in the city is looking for an extension towards Dairyland to the south. That would be an extension of seventeenth avenue to connect to Dairyland. He's also offered, I'll call it option number three, which follows the plan commission recommendation going down to a hundred and twenty four units, again, from a hundred and fifty six units to a hundred and twenty four units. That would remove all the twelve plexes and replace them with eight plexes. But he has a request on there. He'd also ask for the seventy five grand to support the road and utility connection to the south plus an additional seven hundred and fifty thousand, which I think Trevor can explain in more detail, but it's associated with keeping the rent down and the loss of I guess margin, just going to the eight plexes and the rental he loses. There's an option two that they proposed, which is between those two proposals, your general plan and the plan commission recommendation. That would be for a hundred and forty units. That would be nine eight plexes, four twelve plexes, seven twin homes and six single family. So actually in the middle here, four four of these eight would convert to eight plexes and then four would remain twelve plexes. He's asking again for the seventy five thousand to bring this connection and utilities to the south plus an additional three fifty to cover the gap from the original general plan. So that's that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Heidi. And so in layman's terms of what the developer is asking for, if the first plan with the density, basically without the density, he's asking for city support financially for anything other than the first plan put forward with the density that they're offering. And and you spelled that out very well, Mr. Heidi. Thank you so much. So with that, I will open it up, the floor up Lola. Do you want to say anything before we move on to the council floor?
No, I think we should get the input from council.
Okay, go ahead, Ryland. You've got your hand up.
Did I just hear that right? They want four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars so that they can make sure that they personally make a profit on this, correct?
It's a little bit.
It's more with the rental and the rental point on the monthly rental point. I think it would be best to hear from Trevor if you have a question on that and what that is covering.
And maybe let's let's try to answer that briefly ourselves just for a minute and then we'll bring it to more council members. And if we need to, we can call Trevor up. But basically, if the the cost analysis of putting this development in with the amount of rent that's being charged ver- with the density versus without the density and they still have the cost of the infrastructure, that's where the extra city support in dollars comes into play, Ryland. And we can get more clarification on that.
Yes, is what you're saying is they want our money so that they can make sure that they have adequate profit in their pocket.
Well, you you could state it either way, I guess. And we can call Trevor up here. I would just need a motion to suspend the rules. Mary Soberg, go ahead. I can't hear you.
You're muted, Mary.
Okay, I would make a motion to suspend the rule so we can hear from Trevor.
Okay, and Nate, you got your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to second that motion.
Okay, all in favor of suspending the rules for Trevor to speak? Go ahead, please.
Aye.
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 Okay. Sounds like Trevor is walking up to the microphone, Trevor Bowlin. Go ahead, please, if you can answer that question.
Thank you, Ryland, and thank you, Mayor. So council, basically, there's two options there, right? So one is either financial support and keeping affordable housing or understanding that we're going to have to increase rents further, depending on which option you pick, two or three, Ryland. Would either depict either an additional hundred dollars or two hundred dollars in rents. And therefore, none of them would be would be the income insecure for affordable housing purposes. So it's it's kind of a decision point of council and city. Do you want to provide financial support and have affordable housing or do you not care about affordable housing and we just have to increase rates, rental rates?
Well, it sounds like this is not going to be affordable housing as it is. And is there anything stopping you from in a year raising rents? Because this is sounding pretty sketchy right now to me, so I don't know what to say.
Okay, Nate, you got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, I tried to lower my hand by hitting star nine again.
Okay, no problem. We'll take your hand down. Lee Schwabs, please.
When we talk about this low income rental, what is the proposed monthly cost right now? Is it under plan one?
Trevor, I'm gonna call you back up to the microphone. If you can answer Lee's question, Lee, maybe you can state your question one more time because we may have missed part of your you you faded out there just for a second. Lee, go ahead one more time, please.
Okay, under plan one with the low income, what would be the monthly rate?
He he's coming back to the microphone. Just give him a second.
Lee, it's depending upon which unit, if it's a three bedroom, two bath, or if it's a two bedroom. But that'll range anywhere from a thousand seventy five to twelve seventy five.
Thousand seventy five to twelve seventy five, he said, depending if it's a two or three bedroom. Go ahead, Ryland.
So something's not adding up here. They can't make a profit at that rent when Brian Chefcheck built a whole block of one bedroom apartments, had leases signed and had rents that were lower than that and didn't ask for money from us.
Okay, council, go ahead, please. If anybody wants to speak, I'm gonna let you go ahead and raise your hand or let us know who wants to come up next. Lee, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I have another question for Trevor. If we give them the amount that they want under two and three, Does that even if we give them the money, does that still, does the monthly rent increase? Increase in addition to the payment or is that eliminate the rental increase?
Lee, that would be an elimination of the rent increase if there's consideration by the city council for financial support.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it comes back to council. Any other, any other questions, answers, dialogue? Go ahead, Mary, you've got your hand up.
Could somebody on staff talk about the topography, the hills that the residents were concerned about and how they said that they didn't follow the the comp plan?
Okay, I'll trade this over to Charlie Jones. Charlie?
Yeah, Mary, this is Charlie. They're in their packet on their general plan. They have topography where they've identified steep slopes. They've been identified areas with that have trees on them. And that area is sloped. I think most of the council's been out to look at it. But it isn't of steepness that we can't couldn't develop and it is still a prime development area. The deep, the the area with the steep slopes is in the very southwest corner. And that's in kind of separated in their single family homes. It's in the kind of the backyard area. That is fairly steep in through that area. As far as the comp plan goes, you know, the comp plan shows that there's a need. It shows those areas developed for roads. It talks about housing. And again, that's always been a battle. We're a university town and we're about forty percent owner occupied, I believe about sixty percent rental. It has always been a goal of the Plan Commission and City Council to try to get more single family. And I think, you know, we've talked about that. We had workshops in January and February. Single house, single family housing, Menominee has never had a lot of them because we require sewer and water. You can build out in the town of Red Sea to the town of Menominee without sewer and water, and it's a whole lot cheaper and you get a lot of land. There is no identified wetlands on that property. You know, there was a discussion whether that was zoned or targeted. That is called, that census tract through the that area and the tech park is called an opportunity zone. It's identified as HUD is it? And there are tax credits available. Now, this developer is not going after them, but some of the other developers we've had in the past have have targeted this site. Because it is a HUD opportunity zone and they are eligible for tax credits. That's why Dancing Oaks, which is the development just north of there is there. They applied and they did get tax credits and those are renter assisted.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Eddy?
If I could just piggyback a little bit on what Charlie said. You know, with the comp plan also is our future roads. Transportation roads. So we do have. This is out of the comp plan. I just pulled it off the website. The area we're looking at is right here in this area here. So you can see we put in that we've at some point we wanted Seventeenth to continue north-south. Eleventh to continue here. And I know many of the public that are listening don't like this, but we've identified the road extending Main Street through the rec park to connect to Twenty-first. All, all with the opportunity to spread the traffic out and have more connection going north and south and east and west. And more options for the people living in these areas. Because you can see right now without those green stripes, it's just, it's just a dead zone kind of as far as traffic flow. And to be honest, we look into the south through Dairyland, connecting from Twenty-first Avenue, coming back up to Dairyland through this area too. That's another green space we've looked at. For future growth, so. Just wanted to address some of the transportation, future transportation.
This is Charlie again, just to piggyback on what Randy said, that is in the comp plan. And that's been in the comp plan since probably the early eighties. So that isn't a new idea for the city or the city council.
Okay, I'm going to bring this back to discussion at council level. Ryland, you got your hand up.
Isn't it also in the comprehensive plan that this is to be developed as a single family neighborhood? So why aren't we following our own plan? Because I thought part of having a plan like the comprehensive plan is so that both developers looking at coming to Menominee and city staff. Don't bring us projects like this that we look at and we go. No, the citizens here don't want this. So that we're not wasting people's time.
Ma'am. I'm sorry, I didn't realize Leslie? Or Heidi? Okay. Sorry, I didn't understand what you were. Sorry, I didn't understand what you're looking to do. Okay, go ahead.
Well, Ryland, just before Randy jumps in, this is Charlie. The comp plan doesn't, does show it as residential development. We don't get to the level because we don't know what the development is or the demand at the time to say it's multiple family, single family. It is zone. Single family right now. But the comp plan doesn't say that shall all be single family. That's always been a guide. And and again, when we've looked at it, the last update we did had more kind of bubble areas, so we didn't get down into the which lot and what what lots are, you know, available and should be. So we've kind of tried to leave that development up to the Plan Commission and the City Council. And the property owners or the developers as they come in. What's the best fit? And that's where you get to look at it and you get to decide. So the comp plan isn't a tool that says this is absolutely single family period. Nothing else can ever happen here. It's a guide and it's a guide for residential development that is not targeted for tech park, industrial, commercial. It is targeted for residential.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, just like to add, so following that Ryland, all those future roads I showed you. The council could not follow any of that if you wish. I mean, you, you're not bound by that. You're not bound by that connectivity. It just, it was thought through at one point, and I think we're looking at mixed juice and a lot of things. There's also that seventy percent rule, which was brought up by some of the residents. But you're not bound by that also. So you're using the comp plan as a guide to try to, you know, look at future growth. But nobody predicted we'd be in a pandemic this year. Nobody predicted a lot of things, so. I think we're looking for the wisdom for the council on which way you want to go. I, I just wanted to point out that that road connectivity was in there. But you don't have to follow it. You could abandon that if you wish.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Council members, Mary, do you have your hand up?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Mary.
So concern was raised, I don't know who to direct this to, that, you know, say Trevor does this PUD and it doesn't, he doesn't follow through on all the properties and they sell it. Can you tell me what happens to a PUD? If somebody I don't know how to say it other than defaults on their, on their plan?
I'm going to turn this over to Charlie Jones.
Charlie, again, the, the, the value of the PUD is it has to be followed or you have to abandon it just as a rezoning. And so somebody else couldn't come in and develop it differently. So if this developer only does the first two phases and not the last three other two phases. That, that still has to be twin homes and single family homes. The other issue that we're looking at it with, we'll be looking at with the final plan. Is we believe that the right of way for all the phases needs to be dedicated now because that will lay out how we get out to County Trunk J and how we disperse future traffic as it develops.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So talk to us a little bit more about a road from Seventeenth through Seventeenth and out to Dairyland Road. What is the likelihood of that actually happening and how quickly could we make that happen?
Mr. Eddy can probably answer that the best.
I'll give it a shot, Mary. So, so if this, if just if this development went through and the right of way went to the south to the edge of that property. We'd be short. We'd still have to get through the tree farm. To get to Dairyland. However, I think if the council's desire is to continue that road up there, we can, we can work with that property owner and see what options we have. As far as going further to the south. Know how quick that happens is kind of up to the council and the property owner, but I think this council sent a strong message that we want to keep that road going to the south and we want to get to Dairyland. It's outside the boundary of, you know, to continue the road further. You got I mean, you got, you got tools in the toolbox besides working with the developer. I guess you, you know, you have condemnation if you want to. We've never done that in this city. But that's an option that, you know, if we think it's critical to get there. In most cases, we've been able to work with the property owner to continue the right of way and the utilities in a direction we'd like to go. And Lowe's, Lowe's looking to jump in and.
Well, Mary asks us LOL too. So I believe the owner of the land of that property was on the call tonight and was supportive of the project. So I, he's aware of it now or somehow is aware of it and it sounded like he was willing to work somewhat with the city. So that door appears to be open if the council wants us to walk through it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pring and Mr. Eddy. Council members, Robin, you have your hand up?
Yes. I just want to address the concern about the developer making money and asking us for help. And in order to make any housing affordable for for people, they're going to have to have help from the city, the county or the federal government. It's their whole purpose is to make money. And have to make enough from their mortgages, their insurance, their taxes. And have enough money left over to do upkeep. So I don't find it offensive that Trevor's asking for our help because if it isn't Trevor, it's going to be someone else and they're going to ask us for help. Brian Chefcheck is a friend of mine. He doesn't build low income housing. He builds nice places and he doesn't need the help, I guess. So that shouldn't be a issue for us. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Robin. Ryland, you got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Um, well, I mean, like Robin just said, Brian Chefcheck makes nice places that are cheaper without asking us for money. So I suspect the next apartment building he makes is going to be cheaper. He's not going to be asking us for money. Why is this developer saying the only way I can do this is if you give me four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? But I also wanted to know what's stopping them from raising the rent up in a year, even though it's in their plan? I also was kind of curious as to how many times Bill Albright has come back asking us for a change to his PUD because he couldn't afford to put single family houses next to his multifamily houses. Like he had originally planned and three, four, or five years later. He needs us to change and allow him to put denser housing in and if that doesn't sit well with me. So is there estimation on how many times he's come back to us asking for rezoning on his PUD projects?
I don't know how we can answer that. I guess I would probably turn it over to Charlie Jones for that piece, but and then the other piece, I'll answer it when I get to it.
The multiple family that he's been in building on north of Nicholas Drive was never part of the PUD. The PUD that he developed was a single family in the Parkland. And then they had multiple family and
Bay Homes.
Bay Homes, thanks. I couldn't think of the name. South of there and they abandoned that when the economy kind of crashed in two thousand and six, I think, or eight, eight.
I think they came, this Ryland, this is LOL. I think they came back and we took the overlay PUD off around maybe two thousand sixteen or two thousand eighteen. So yes, we did make that one big change. And again, then we just went through a twin home rezoning for him on the land that was vacant between the single families and the full multiples that were originally approved.
And if I get, this is Randy Eddy, can I add to that? There was a request in the middle there that they asked to change some of the, the build out and the council denied that request. So there was a intermediate change in that PUD that the council denied. And then there was the request to remove the PUD as LOL said, and the council agreed to that to bring that all to single family. You could also denied that if you wish, but so I would say two times he tried to change the PUD. But he did build a single family homes that he said he was going to build. There were some other things early on in that question.
The other portion of it was the price of rent and supply and demand, I guess, will dictate some of that. I think the, the portion that the developer is looking at is again, based on the number of units per space. So it would be the density. Without the density, they still have the infrastructure. I think that's where they're getting their their financial numbers from. I'm very much in favor of the road going to J if this goes through. I think Dairyland Road a connection piece is, is a pivotable piece for this. I also see that Lee Schwabs has your hand up. Go ahead, Lee.
You know, when we start looking at a new industry coming to town. We give them a break on the land. Now, we give them incentives based upon their employees that they're going to represent with them. And I'm looking at this as just part of that whole equation. If we don't have the housing here, nobody's going to come in here and build another plant. We heard the president of FET plus talk about this situation they're facing with it. Then Osterman talked about the surveys they've done, that there's employment here and that I think we got to look at what is valuable to the whole community. And I, I think it's coming upon us to do something about the housing situation. Either that or we'll live in the twenty twenty forever. And I personally don't have a problem helping supplement this project. I look at it no differently than what we're doing with the industrial plants coming in and this is just addition to it.
Okay, and then thank you, Lee, Mary, and then Randy, and then Jeff. Go ahead, Mary.
And this is just a statement. Everybody's concerned about Twenty-first Street and I have to admit, and I, you know, I drive school bus and so I'm on it every day, every morning during the worst possible time and in the afternoon. And the biggest, then we relined it and that was incredibly helpful. The problem that we have on Twenty-first is people that are impatient. And not courteous. And that's where the rub comes in. And I don't know what the speed limit is, but if it would make you feel better, you know, maybe we could lower the speed limit a little bit. If this comes to pass. But Twenty-first is a whole lot better than it was before we put lines on it.
Okay, thank you, Mary, Randy, and then Jeff. Go ahead, Randy.
I've called Menominee my home for sixty years. That's a long time. Many people have talked about the historic end of East, East Menominee. I'm I realize some homes are considered historic, but the only thing is probably the old colony shop. And the hog barn at the reg park are the things that are still left. I, I think the sellers of this property, they want to sell it. I guess I think that's real important that they don't want this to be a wildlife reserve or a place where people can spend time or a park or to walk at. They want to sell it. I think a lot of young people who are just getting out of school or starting in, in the world. They can't afford a home. They can't afford to buy a home. And I really would like them to rent in Menominee. And work in Menominee. Then work in Menominee and live in Eau Claire or Duran or Chipor or whatever. I want to, I want their money to stay here that they're making here in Menominee. Yeah, I actually live behind the clinic in the hospital and that density in those apartments is much more than what they're talking about at this place. And to be honest with you, I worked in Eau Claire for sixteen years. So I would always leave from my house and go to the two stoplights either at Twenty-first or Twenty-fourth, and there's never been more than two cars there. So I don't, I struggle with the density. It's, it's busy at school. I understand that and that's probably fifteen minutes twice a day that it's really busy on Twenty-first around the schools. Most of the time, there isn't a lot of cars there. And you know, when we did the, the property that was across from the middle school. And we didn't want to change the zoning or give on multiple family there. And I was under the impression that somebody was going to develop it. And there were going to be single family homes just popping up all over the place in that nine or fourteen acres. And it's still for sale. I think it's a bigger for sale sign than it was. But, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm for this. I think this is a good idea. I, I understand the property there, but I mean, the family wants to sell it. It's in a good community. It's a good neighborhood. I've seen some of the apartments that go up. I think they're pretty decent for people. I'm in support of this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Jeff Futhu, you had your hand up, I believe, next.
Yes. That was about.
did some math here, and for what they're asking for decreasing their base two portion of the twelve plexes down to eight plexes. The developer is going to lose five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in rent in the first year. So they're asking for what, four hundred and twenty-five thousand? To offset that difference? Well, that's only gonna cover one year of the offset. So I kinda like agree with Lee in one way that, you know, they could use some help. And you know, this was only a one-time deal where we have to pay them, you know, for the lower rent. Um, but I also have to agree with Ryland is what's gonna stop them from raising their rent. I would like to see this development go in, but with less density and the road connected to Dairyland. And that's all I got.
Okay, uh, I've got Lowell Prang here. Thank you, Jeff. Go ahead, Lowell.
So Jeff, in response to that, if if the council would give the administration the authority to move forward to discuss this project further uh, with the developer, we would bring that up, what what kinda controls we could have on the rent, what timing would be, what the payment would be, when the payment would be based on the phases. We, you know, we get into a developer's agreement, I think that would come back to you at a future point. But I think we're looking tonight for that guidance of whether or not you're, you wanna go down looking at this proposal, whether it's a good one. And or if there's a lesser amount that you would, you know, lesser number of those other options that you would support uh, in lieu of the full one as recommended by the Plan Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prang. I that 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 was pretty well understood here. Uh, any questions? Uh, Lee, go ahead, please.
What are you looking for as a motion tonight?
Uh, well, it could be either support of the project or support of any of the options or support of the administration negotiating uh, the other options uh, and bringing it back to the council. Mr. ID?
Yeah, I I think if I could just piggyback on what Lowell said, I, you know, if if the council's supportive of this, if you're looking at, in particular, option two and three, where that amount is significant, I think we're looking for a direction to to meet with the developer to better understand that number and get the details that Lowell just laid out. But we just don't know. It'd be nice to know what density you're looking for. We, you know, having that uh, Trevor's laid out two, three options, one with with a hundred and fifty-six units in it. He laid out option two with a hundred and forty units in it, and he laid out option three with a hundred and twenty-four, which follows the Plan Commission. Again, if you are supportive of the project, it would be nice to know which option you're looking at. And I think administratively, if you're in option two and three, where that ask is is a little higher, I think the motion would say something about us going back, staff going back and bringing back up a more refined proposal at the next council meeting. If it's option one, which is closer to the general plan, that's up to you. I think we could, we can move forward that if you wanna go with that density. I don't know if that's clear or not, but that's that's kinda what we're looking at. I believe, right, Lowell?
Correct. I mean, you could act on the general plan this evening and the rezoning as submitted by the developer, uh, which was not the recommendation from Plan Commission, but council has that ability. If you'd like to look at the Plan Commission or recommendation or or the other option as Trevor submitted, I think we would recommend that you give us the authority to discuss slash negotiate that with the developer. What that means again is that over what time and 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 when the phases going, when the single family is going, et cetera, so.
Okay, um, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Lee, you're next, and then Mary.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we proceed with the option number one with the Astor Estates.
Okay, Lee Schwabs has got a motion on the floor.
We should make sure.
I'm uh, if if anybody wants to second that motion, they can, or we can uh, let the motion fall.
Can I just clarify the motion, Lee, if I would? The attorney's whispering to me. Did that include the seventy-five thousand dollars that that was on that option one that Trevor laid out?
You know, and so it's it's proposed, the whole thing.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, okay, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, maybe we could reread the motion back just to be clear uh, before we get a second. Um, Callie?
Motion made by Schwabs to proceed with option number one as proposed.
Okay, Nate, you got your hand up?
Um, again, I I apologize. I would like to lower my hand.
Okay, so your hand's coming down. Thank you. Um, and let's uh, we have still have a motion on the floor. If anybody would like to second that motion, now is your opportunity, or we can uh, the motion can fail and we can bring it back to the floor.
Randy, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Eric.
Yes, I don't, I don't, I'm on the phone, so I don't know if you see if my hand is raised or not.
Okay, Eric Sutherland with a second to Lee's motion. Uh, additional discussion. I'll open the floor for discussion. Okay, we, oh, Mary, you got your hand up. Go ahead, Mary.
If we go with option one, then I think it's absolutely critical that we uh, find our way through the the tree farm and out onto to Dairyland Road as soon as possible. Just stating a, an opinion.
Okay, yep. Uh, Jan Traxler, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, if we go with one, can we go with the, with all three of them and have you deal with the developer? Have the
Well, I think that uh, at this time, though, there's a motion on the floor to accept the first one uh, or the uh, with the seventy-five thousand dollars increment and move forward or not. If you wanted to vote it down, you could vote it down and you could come back with another motion. Uh, or we could pass this one and move it forward. It's kind of um, I think, cut and dry with what's in front of you. Um, I realize there's some, there's some serious conversation about extending Highway uh, J or Dairyland Road in through there, but those uh, dots have not been uh, tied together at this point quite as of yet. Lowell, you've got your microphone on?
If this is approved, Jan, I think we still wanna talk to have a development agreement to some degree, again, regarding probably the phases when utilities go in and have to understand that process that they're looking to do. So I think you'll see more on this development in the future, but I think staff would have to still work to bring that back to this body for your review and hopefully then approval. And again, in that meantime, we could talk to the joint property owner, Mary, to see if we can get some sort of agreement regarding right-of-way out to J Dairyland. Again, that would include some utility extensions, so there would be some cost probably there in exchange for the right-of-way that would come out of the city coffers.
Okay, and Robin, you got your hand up. Oh, thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Robin, you got your hand up?
Yeah, my papers are getting all mixed up. So plan number one or option one is what Plan Commission approved or no?
No, that is not correct. Uh, Mr. ID?
I've got that as the hundred and fifty-six unit, the general plan that was submitted. That would include eight twelve plexes, or five eight plexes, seven twin homes, and then six single-family homes.
So the plan been approved, option two?
Uh, the Plan Commission recommended option three, which is a hundred and twenty-four units. So you you were looking at the hundred and fifty-six units, which also includes a seventy-five thousand dollars to extend that road towards Dairyland that we requested.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then Ryland, you had your hand up?
Um, yeah, I guess I haven't, how many owners of property, there's options to cut through the road up to Dairyland Road, but I had at least one of them um, called me up a few weeks ago before he went in for surgery. He said he was sorry he couldn't uh, talk to us this evening and said um, putting a road through is one of the last things he wants to see happen. And that he was very adamant about not having a road put through or next to his property. I guess I don't also feel comfortable with supporting a a plan that even the Plan Commission said no to. So.
Okay, thank you, Ryland. I'm gonna give the floor back to the council. We do have Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, this is Eric Sutherland.
Go ahead, Eric.
I guess I have a few, I I have a few few questions just to verify on these three different options. The option two of one forty-two units, now there would be additional monies from the city required for that, is that correct?
That is correct.
What is the amount for that?
I'm gonna have Lowell answer that.
Option two.
So over and above the seventy-five thousand that was in the general development plan for this, the extension to the south property line, they're asking for another three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the, what I'll call the middle of the road option, option number two. Option number three, which is the one that was recommended by the Plan Commission, they were asking over and above the seventy-five thousand dollars for another seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in support. And again, that would be to hold the rent, I think, at a fairly standard level. Again, that's what we would need to, I think, talk to them about and put in a development agreement to monitor that that is, they would be holding to that uh, agreement.
I wanna verify I got that correct, Lowell. You said seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars on option three?
Correct.
So, you know, and I guess that that, those were the the two um, deciding factors for myself as far as what plan I think is more appropriate. The density issue, I'm not overly concerned about. Um, I don't really think there's that much of a difference between one twenty-four and one fifty-six. Um, but the amount that will be required from the city to assist in plans two or three is significant in my mind. So, you know, I do think option one, that's one of the primary reasons I like option one. It just reduces the um, the cost to the city on developing the the this and puts most of the the responsibility onto the um, the, you know, the business owner who's investing in this. So that that's why I did second Lee's motion. Um, and you know, I just like to say one other point, you know, and this has come up many times throughout discussion. Um, you know, I mean, I think it's, I I know, the the term low, low income or housing was was uh, brought up a few times. But my goal in this city and hopefully throughout the whole country is to not ever need low, low income housing. So the way you do that, as far as I'm concerned, is have high-quality skilled jobs or factory jobs to give the citizens and and the community members opportunities for employment. So they don't need assistance or low, low-income housing. And one way you do that is bringing in jobs industry, but hand in hand with affordable housing. And that's why I support this. And I think it's gonna be good for Menominee. And that's uh, completes my uh, statement. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Lee, you got your hand up. Go ahead, Lee.
Yeah, I just wanna comment about the the vote with the Plan Commission, that maybe we shouldn't override it. I happen to be on the Plan Commission and I happen to be the one that made the motion for uh, for what became number three option. And I've done thought, thinking since, I've been doing some studying and and I changed my mind and made the motion I made tonight.
Okay, a little more discussion. Anybody else got anything else they wanna say? We do have a motion on the floor. Up for discussion. I'll just put my two cents worth in. I think it's imperative that we work on putting a connection between the road and Dairyland Road. Uh, I know there's a, some some major traffic concerns from the community and you know, that's being one of the concerns that I have is the traffic concerns. It's a beautiful area up there. I know we have beautiful wildlife and it's a, it's a, it's a great area. It's a I grew up up there riding mini bikes and and go-karts and all kinds of things, so I know the area. Um, I also know how hard it is to get developers sometimes to develop a a certain projects uh, in certain areas and um, you know, it's, it's a tough decision for council members. It's a tough decision for uh, the mayor. It's a tough decision for staff and community members. And 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 I realize two points that were made tonight from citizens calling in, good points, all good points. Uh, um, it's a tough seat to be in. If you're a council member, it's a tough seat to be in if you're the mayor. Uh, I would welcome anybody to be in these chairs if if you would like to be, uh, you know. Uh, we need your support, that's for sure. With that being said, um, I think I'm gonna end the discussion portion of this and we're gonna take a vote. However, um, I'm gonna go around the room one more time. Staff, do you have any more input? Lowell? Mr. ID, Ben, everything is in order? Council members, uh, do you have any more to say on this topic matter before we go to a roll call vote? Uh, Ryland, Erdman, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Um, I don't feel like I ever got an answer on what's keeping them from raising the rent above what they stated. Um, which is, as was pointed out, above what in Menominee is considered to be affordable rent for workforce housing.
I think I'll turn that over to Lowell. I think he can probably, I thought he answered it, but one more time.
Uh, I can't answer the last part. I guess what is affordable in Menominee, Ryland, but we, I think part of it would be that the numbers the numbers they laid out, we would work with them in the developer's agreement to make sure that they're uh, meeting that condition and and for the terms, I guess, that we would bring back to council, what what that is exactly. I don't know what that looks like, but probably during the five-year build-out that those rents would not change uh, or something like that during the that time period. So you would get to see that again and get another uh, vote on it.
Uh, yes, and and again, uh, market rate and supply and demand too will dictate some of that. I can't answer it a hundred percent, Ryland. I don't know if anybody can uh, in this room, but we can hold them, their feet to the fire with a developer's agreement uh, to a certain degree. Um, but then again, uh, I'm gonna open it up. I don't think staff has any more to say on this. I, council, I'm gonna give you a last chance to speak your piece and then we're gonna do a roll call vote. If this uh, vote passes, uh, then we'll move forward. Um, if it fails, then you'll have another opportunity to make a subsequent motion. Uh, I'm gonna have Callie reread the motion one more time. Thank you. Oh, we got two hands up. I'm sorry, I didn't see the hands. Um, who's, Jan Traxler? Go ahead, please.
About, yeah, it's about Seventeenth Street going up to Dairyland Road. Would that go straight up? Or is that going to be uh, the street that goes past the single-family houses?
I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. ID.
Jan has laid out now that would go uh, past a single-family home, so there would be a jog in that connection, that north-south connection. So so it would not be straight.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Mary, go ahead, please.
I'm, I guess I'm just struggling with um, the tw- the twelve plexes a little bit. Um, I I guess, I I'm not quite sure how I'm gonna vote on this. I would have rather seen I, uh, you know, option two maybe be considered, but um, so I just, I guess I just wanted to to say that. I was kinda hoping for a compromise to appease the the neighbors a little bit, that there would be less density, but um, just a statement.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, uh, I think we're just about to that point where we can do a roll call vote on this. Uh, Callie, if you wanna read it, motion one more time, and then we'll do a roll call vote.
Motion made by Schwabs, seconded by Sutherland to proceed with option number one as proposed.
In- including?
Including the seventy-five thousand dollar increment.
Okay, so as you heard, the motion um, with the seventy-five thousand dollar city contribution for utilities. And that density is a hundred and fifty-six units. Okay, I am uh, gonna have Callie do a roll call vote.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Sweeney? Sweeney?
I had the whole first, there's one.
Uh, can you say that one more time, Robin? I missed it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Erdman?
No.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
No.
Traxler?
Yes.
Okay, it passes seven-two. We'll work on some more information and bring it back to you. Um, we're going to move on with the rest of our meeting. That means that we are going to do the rezone uh, possibility on that next, which would be um, proposed rezoning request from Trevor Bullen Estover Terrace for twenty-nine point oh-five acres. Currently owned by the Golden family. So with that being said, um, Mr. Idy?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to see if I can bring up the slide. So to match the, the planned unit development, um, there's three elements to the rezoning. Um, those are all in the gray area that would be changed uh, from single-family. Again, the P U D is the overlay zoning. The underlying zoning is what you're looking at right now. And the, the area up on the top side, this would be going from single-family to conservancy. So from single-family to conservancy, this area would be going from single-family to, single-family to full multiple. R, R three, and this area would be going from single-family to R four. This is where the twin homes are. And then this area is where the single-family units would be and that would remain single-family. So, we had the public hearing. This recommendation was recommended by the city council, or forwarded from the city council to the plan commission. The plan commission favorably recommended the rezoning. And it's here for your action, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Idy. Thank you for that. And this would be a resolution, so we would need this introduced?
Ordinance.
Or an ordinance, I'm sorry.
It's been introduced, so now we.
Been introduced, and so we would need a um, motion to waive the first reading. Anybody would like to do that? Jan Traxler?
Yes.
Okay, you were making a motion to waive the first reading. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, Robin Sweeney, can you answer?
I second Jan's motion.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, duly noted. All, so then we'll need a motion to waive the second reading. Mary, can you say something? Go ahead.
I would make a motion to waive the second reading.
And Lee Schwabs, you have your hand up?
Yes, I'll make a second.
Okay, a motion been made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. Opposed, I have two, two opposed?
I was opposed on the first one, Dylan.
Okay, Ryland and Jeff Luther. Okay, we got that. Thank you. Um, and then we'll need a, if you guys want to go ahead with this, we need a motion to um adopt said ordinance. Uh, Robin, you've got your hand up.
I make a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Okay, is there a second to Robin's motion? Lee Schwabs, you've got your hand up?
So I'll second the motion.
Okay, the motion uh, for the rezone has been made and seconded. Uh, additional discussion? Jan, go ahead, please.
No, I'm sorry. I, I wanted to put my hand down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, any additional discussion? Okay, just all in favor. All in favor of said rezoning motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, two noes duly noted. Ryland and Jeff Luther. Okay, uh, motion passes. Moving on with the rest of our meeting. Uh, let's see. Uh, the next one uh, is uh, proposed amendment number three to the project plan of tax increment district number twelve, authorizing district as a donor district. Lowell Prang, could you bring us up to speed on that one, please?
I will try to. So TID number twelve is the district out around Anderson Distribution, the, the warehousing, Bill's distributing. Uh, that district is in a good cash position. And after completing the frontage road along TID number fourteen, which is the QuickTrip area in North Menominee, the new QuickTrip, the frontage road along but to Philippe Farm, uh, we're recommending that council would authorize by resolution some donoring from TID twelve to TID fourteen. Uh, hopefully TID fourteen could then be closed out in a few years much quicker than uh, it would be if we just wait uh, for future development to occur. So we're trying to get these districts closed quicker and get the full amount back on the tax roll, uh, general tax roll for both the city, both the county and school district. So this would help do that. So we would like to ask that this resolution adopting amendment number three be approved by council this evening. We will have a joint review board meeting tomorrow. Uh, they are the ultimate arbitrators of uh, our decision-makers on the, on the project because that includes the other overlying taxing entities as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Prang. Uh, any questions for Lowell um, or staff? Otherwise, if anyone want to make a motion, uh, we could do so at this time. Mary, go ahead.
Make a motion, um, adopting the amendment to number three.
Okay, motion been made. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, Robin, go ahead.
I second Mary's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded um, to um, authorizing a district uh, number three uh, to number twelve. Uh, with that being said, um, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And then we're moving down to six B, resolution amendment number two to the project plan of tax increment district number fourteen, adding a subtracting, adding subtracting district territory.
Wendy's online too. I see her hand up, but I don't know.
She's waited this long. She should probably be allowed to say something.
Hey, Wendy, go ahead, please.
Hi there.
Your mic's open, Wendy. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, yes, amendment number two to TID number fourteen. This is really a correction amendment. We're looking to do uh, a TIP requires whole tax parcels to be within the TIP district. And it was discovered that there were a couple parcels that had been split. So some were in the district, some were out. So there's two, one with Mar Court and one with QuickTrip, that we'd like to bring in all of their tax parcels within the district. There's also a third parcel that we're looking to take out of the district. And that is where the Denny sits. They, that parcel has been inadvertently not put into the TIP district increment. So we have not been collecting on that district. So we felt um, that we should just take it out of the district at this point. We hadn't been including it. And um, so we're adding two parcels, or partial parcels, and removing a parcel. That's the recommendation. It did go to joint review board initially to review. They have final say tomorrow. And the plan commission also did recommend it. This amendment number two. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Uh, you did adequate. Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, uh, council. If anybody would like to make a motion to uh, support this resolution? Adopt this, adopt this, I'm sorry, adopt the resolution. Thank you, Ben. Go ahead. Anybody want to su- adopt this resolution? Or Mary, go ahead.
I would make a motion to adopt um, amendment number two.
Okay, thank you. A motion is on the floor. Anybody would like to second that? May, uh, Robin Sweeney, go ahead, please.
Um, I'll second Mary's motion.
Okay, thank you. A motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, are we okay to keep moving? Okay, uh, that brings us down to six C, proposed resolution authorizing the submittal of a six-year statement of project intentions list to the Wisconsin Bureau of Aeronautics. I'll bring that up to Mr. Idy. Go ahead, Mr. Idy.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So every two years, the bureau asks for the, our six-year plan for the airport. The airport commission has recommended the projects you have before you, uh, but need adoption of this resolution to go forward. And I, I want to point out that if the council wishes, Dr. Dan Johnson, who's the chairman of the airport commission is online. He's been online for some time, but it's up to you. It, I, I think the projects are pretty self-explanatory, but I'll leave it to you, Mr. Bear.
Uh, I guess depends on, I, I, I think we have a pretty good understanding, at least at staff level, and it's important for the airport. I wouldn't question this whatsoever. If anybody would like to make a motion, we can keep moving, or we can hear from Dr. Dan Johnson also. Um, council?
If they want to go.
Lee, go ahead. Go ahead, Lee.
Yeah. I'm muted. Um, I move approval.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have a motion for moving approval. Is there a second to that motion? Ra, uh, Mary?
I will second Lee's motion.
Okay, thank you. Motion's on the floor and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. Uh, next, we are looking at six D, review of the agreement authorizing Dunn County to act as a responsible unit agent for city recycling services and programs. Discussion and possible motions of action. Uh, without going into the details, I have issues with this particular scenario. So I'm going to let staff talk about this for a minute. Go ahead, Mr. Idy.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief, uh, council, if I may, but I, I needed just a couple more minutes of your time. Um, uh, the Dunn County Solid Waste Committee has, has recommended proposed increases in their solid waste and recycling program. Uh, right now, the city of Menominee has an agreement with Dunn County. For Dunn County to be the responsible unit for recycling for us. We are not in the solid waste program. We are in the recycling. Um, and they are recommending a rate increase in twenty-twenty-one of about two-hundred-and-eighty percent increase. I'm just going to share a screen because I think the one thing we need to, that would maybe help put this in perspective is um, what that looks like for us. Um, right now, we pay Dunn County six dollars per person to handle our recycling and be the responsible unit for recycling, which entails uh, reports to the D N R. Uh, making sure some education is going out to the multifamily units and making sure we're properly recycling the items the D N R requires. Um, in our twenty-twenty budget in this column, this is what we pay right now. Um, we have a satellite recycling operation at our solid waste site off of P. We pay fifty-eight thousand dollars on average every year from Menominee disposal to take that recycling out. The county per capita fee, again, it's six dollars per capita, and I believe that's a population of sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty. We pay ninety-eight thousand. As a municipality, we also pay a hauler customer fee. This is unique to Menominee. I think one other village pays that. But we pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the haulers to help pick up the doorstop recycling within the city. It's kind of encouraging uh, people to recycle and kind of brings that cost down for doorstop recycling. So total expense is about two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars. With the increase at about, from six to al- almost twenty-two dollars, it's kind of up and down because we don't know how many townships are going to stay in the program. We will see this county per capita fee go from ninety-eight thousand to three hundred and sixty thousand in twenty-twenty-one. We still will have our satellite costs. Our hauler customer fee is going to go up because the county has been supplementing at a hundred and twenty thousand. They've been supplementing twenty thousand, giving us a break on the grant money they receive because we're one of the few municipalities that pay that. But that'll go up to a hundred and forty. So our program expenses will change substantially from two-seventy-six to five-fifty-eight. We've been meeting as a s- ad hoc committee with a couple council members to look at solid waste. And staff believes we could become our own recyc- responsible unit and handle the recycling in-house, the city side. And if we did that, we believe our recycling expenses would increase more than twice, but from fifty-eight to one-thirty-three. We will not have a county per capita fee. That line is blank. Our hauler customer fee, we think will be unchanged. We don't think more or less, we don't think the people will change, the ones that have chosen out there, the residents that have chosen to have a hauler come up and pick up their residential waste. We don't think that will change. So that'll remain a hundred and forty thousand. Believe we'll need some help. We're going to, we're proposing a full-time person to come on board with fifty percent of that cost coming from the recycling um, budget, solid waste budget. That's forty-eight thousand. And then we know we'll have to do some more admin and advertising, another twenty-eight thousand. We believe we'll, we can run the program with the expenses changing to three-forty-nine from the two-seventy-six currently. We also want to point out, we would have to, we would, if we were responsible, we would apply to the D N R to get some of the grant money. I think we're conservatively estimating we'd get fifty thousand dollars in grant money from the D N R in twenty-twenty-one. Bringing the total cost of the program.
Oh, sorry, what was the total cost?
Total cost of the operation, looking at, and this is a change in the operation. There's much more in the solid waste program, but the items that are changing, those expenses are, looking at expenses and revenue would be a two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollar pro- program versus two-fifty-six where it's at today. But if you compare it to the five-fifty-eight from the county, that's a savings of two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars. Um, so I just want to, th- that's kind of it. There's a lot of data we put in front of you. Um, there's been a lot of meetings and discussion at the county level. I know the county's had some listening sessions with the municipalities every month. Um, there's a memo in there, a two-page memo Lowell and I put together where we kind of opposed some of the elements in there. Um, they have, they have changed some of their items because of, I think, some of it, that memo. Um, did, time-wise, I don't think you need to make a decision tonight. You don't have to. You can if you wish. We could bring this back on August first, but, but we thought it was important to give the whole council a view on what we're looking at and what the rate increase would be and um, and maybe even get it out to the public a little bit to get some feedback from some of the residents. So um, it's, it's, it's a touchy subject. It's an important subject, and it's something we're not taking lightly. But we want to make sure all the facts are in front of you and see if you have any questions. And I know uh, Lee, Jeff, Lee Schwabs, Jeff Luther and um, and uh, and Ryland, we're all on the committee with the mayor on the subcommittee.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Idy. And uh, so that being said, unless we wanted to uh, go with the uh, Dunn County's uh, proposal, adopt their plan, I would suggest that uh, we let this one uh, play its course and bring it back in a couple of weeks. Uh, perhaps we can get uh, Dunn County here to speak on it also. Um, that would be my recommendation. So, Mary, go ahead, please.
Wouldn't we need more equipment?
No, we wouldn't because uh, basically we're handling the uh, this, the haulers are picking up curbside. Uh, the only thing is, we are becoming our own responsible unit. So we, we have to pay, fill out more paperwork. Uh, but not more equipment. I think I stated that right, Mr. Idy?
Well, y- you are correct, Mr. Mayor, but I don't think equipment, but we may need a couple more recycling containers and maybe a lean to, a little bit more capital. We do have some capital left from the last uh, investment work we did up at the solid waste site. Um, so, so I think not equipment, but maybe some more storage units down there.
Yep.
If we continue to operate like we are. Um, I, it, yes, that, to answer your question, hopefully that answers your question.
Well, and I think maybe if we were to do this and become our own responsible unit, I think we would try to encourage the community to use the curbside pickup, which we're also paying for. Uh, uh, currently though, there's been a disconnect between the haulers and Dunn County. Uh, and so that being said, the county is not necessarily taking everything to uh, the county. The haulers are not taking everything to the county, and that's raising their rates again. And then now I'm finding out that uh, some of the townships too. Our Red Cedar just voted last week to pull out of the um, out of the, the county's operation. And if, if other townships do that, and if we go into this uh, unit or this plan, uh, not to say that the county wouldn't raise it significantly. Also, um, be it said too, that the county is looking Also, be it said too, that the county is looking at a, the possibility of a referendum. Million dollars a year up to five years on top of spending a lot of money on a MRF station, which could be upwards of 20 to 30 million dollars. It just scares me right now in the current situation that we haven't been able to really pin down the director for the county on, on, on numbers. And that being said, maybe we should have the county come in and speak in a couple of weeks. And I would feel, I think I'd feel better about that if the, if that would work for the rest of the council. We could just move this ahead and we could schedule that in a subsequent meeting. Mr. Idy?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to add too much to it, but I would like to point out, I forgot. We think, we, we know we need a full-time person if we move forward. I said 50% would come out of the solid waste budget. I think it's worth noting to the council that the other 50%, we believe half of it would come from stormwater. We need a little help on stormwater and the environmental world and stormwater, some of the inspections, the DNR's requirement. We do some adjustments within that utility. And then the other quarter would come from the utilities because to do some of the environmental work that we've signed up, the council signed up for a reduction by 2025. Some of that legwork we need to do, we think this person could be an environmental all-around person. 50% coming from recycling, 25% coming from the stormwater, and another 25% coming from the utility funds to help us on that energy reduction piece that we've signed up for. I just want to make sure that's out there.
So basically what Mr. Idy is saying is we would have a, the Public Works Department would have a right-hand man to kind of cover some of the bases, or lady, I'm sorry, person, personnel, right-hand personnel to cover some of the bases. So that being said, unless there's a strong contentious feeling that we need to move this ahead, I would like to just bring it back in a couple of weeks and then see where it plays out. Jan Traxler, you've got your hand up?
Yes, if we take over the recycling, where would the recycling products go?
Oh, Mr. Idy.
Well, we, it kind of depends on what the county does. We would hope they, today, I think they go to the county, to their tipping floor. And we think they continue to go there to the county. We would just be, we'd be responsible unit. We'd make sure we have to get the advertising done, education, the pickup, reporting to the DNR. And if the county doesn't take it, they'd have to go someplace else. So I hope that helps answer your question, Jan. It, it'd probably go where the hauler says it needs to go. And right now it goes to the county. It's just hard to predict what the county's going to look like in a year or two. So.
And if I could add to that, Mr. Idy, also, the items right now are being separated. And the system that's, that we would probably look at would be if they were all commingled. And then the haulers would take them to a MRF for separation. So it would be, that would be the direction I think that we would probably lean towards. Any other questions?
What is the MRF?
What's that? I'm sorry, Jan.
What is the MRF?
A MRF, a MRF is where everything is commingled and then they separate it mechanically. Material Recovery Facility is what a MRF stands for. Material Recovery. Not only does it make it less expensive for a hauler to haul, but it also lets it be easier for the community to start doing more recycling. So it's something to look at. Okay.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
So I, last chance, if anybody wants to make it a motion to adopt this through the county, otherwise I'm going to keep moving with our meeting and we're going to bring it back in a couple of weeks. Okay, seeing no motion, we're going to keep this meeting going. Let's see, that brings us down to six E, reimbursement agreement with Wisconsin Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics for fuel card reader system. Mr. Idy, you're on again. Lucky man.
Again, this is a, try to be brief. This is a petition to the Bureau of Aeronautics to get 80% funding to support the replacement of fuel card reader system at the airport. The one we have is, is just not working right. We estimate the cost at about 18,000, maybe a little less. We need the council's support of this petition to go forward. The Airport Commission has supported it. And again, Dr. Johnson has been hanging with us all night. If you wish to hear from him, he is, he is out there in the virtual world. But I think that's the, that's the general procedure. The Airport Commission and Dr. Johnson are supporting this. We need the council's support to go forward.
Okay, anybody like to make a motion? In support of the card reader system at the airport? Mary?
I would approve, I would make a motion to approve the card reader system at the airport for 18,000.
Okay, is there a second to that? Jeff Luther, you got your hand up?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Need a roll call? Ryland, Ryland, go ahead, please.
Um, we'd only be paying for 20% of that 18,000, correct?
Uh, yes, Ryland, only 20%. That would come out of the capital money funds left over from last year for the airport.
Good question. Thank you, Ryland. And Nate, you got your hand up?
I was just looking to second, so no big deal.
Okay, very good. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Traxler?
Yeah, yes.
Sutherland?
That's all right. We're going to skip, we lost Eric there. We'll keep on going. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Passes. Next is six F, appointments to various boards and commissions, including the Menominee Housing Authority. Andy Lamb, oh, I'm sorry, one more. Andy Lamb is recommended by the Housing Authority, and I think he'd be a good fit. Anybody want to make a motion to accept that? Mary? Okay, Mary's got a motion on the floor. Anybody want to second that motion? Randy Summerfield?
I second Mary's motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Thank you. Brings us down to budget transfers. Some budget transfers in here, Lowell.
Uh, two minor ones from the IT department. They're looking to move some dollars around to cover some maintenance for router support that's expired earlier this year. So it's about $600 total, 500 something total. From two accounts.
Thank you, Lowell. Does anybody want to make a motion to accept the budget transfers? Jeff Luther, go ahead, please.
I'll make a motion to accept both the budget transfers as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that Jeff's motion? Robin Sweeney, you got your hand up? Go ahead, please.
Um, I second Jeff's motion.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to, to for the budget transfers. Thank you. So with that being said, roll call vote, please.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Traxler?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The briefest mayor report I can give you is be safe out there. Don't take any chances. Dredging has begun. And there's going to be some big trucks running from Wolfski's Bay down out that direction past the library. So it's pretty exciting news. After 10 years of pushing to get some dredging done on the big Wolfski's Bay, it's looking good. Uh, other than that, our new sidewalk downtown on the north side of Main Street is in. Looks great. I think they did a great job down there. And other than that, I will just let staff bring anything else into the floor. Lowell, do you have anything? Where are your mask? Oh, my mask. I got a mask.
No, but you sent that letter.
Oh, that. Sorry. I did send a letter off to Dunn County, off to KT in support of whatever Dunn County feels necessary to keep our community safe from the mayor's office. I did not speak for the council. But from the mayor's perspective, I think we're all in this together. So whatever you can do to spread the word to keep everybody safe in our community, very much appreciated. It only takes one person to, to cause a lot of harm. So that being said, we did send a letter off to KT Gallagher. Add is a copy of the letter in your packet. And just to let them know that we are on board with whatever the county feels necessary to keep everyone safe. There's a number of Zoom meetings this week. I'll be attending all week, I believe, tomorrow and the next day and the next day. And I don't know, just a lot of, a lot of Zooming. So go ahead, Lowell, you got something? No, Lowell's throwing his hands in the air. So anything, any, anything from council members? Communications? No, okay, keep going. Here we go. Claims, if anybody'd like to pay the bills. We have a revised claims list in front of you. Mary, go ahead, please.
I will make a motion to pay the claims on the revised list.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Is there a second to that motion? Robin, Robin, you got your hand up? Sorry.
I second Mary's motion.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to pay the bills. Any discussion? Nate, you got your hand up?
I'm, I'm just really slow at hitting start and I am getting in on these motions and seconds.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pay the bills. Roll call vote, please.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Traxler?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
And Eric's back. Okay, thank you. Passes. Now we go to licenses. Anybody like to make a motion to pass the licenses? Robin Sweeney, you got your hand up?
I make a motion to pass the licenses.
Jeff Luther, you got your hand up?
I'll second Robin's motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, Lowell's got his hand up. He didn't wear it on the screen.
But they get, but they can hear me now. I just forgot to mention during communications. So we do need to have a special council meeting next Monday night at six or 6:30. Probably will be 6:30. We need to approve some clean water fund loan documents. So the state will give us money towards our $7 million round number wastewater treatment plant. But it's, it's a timing thing with the state. This is the way they have to do it and their closings, et cetera. So we will try and do, it should be a fairly quick meeting unless you, there's something else comes to the table in between now and then. But do you have a preference on time, six or 6:30?
On a Zoom meeting next Monday?
Monday evening. No preference?
I hear 6:30 out there. That sound good for everybody?
We have plan commission at seven, don't we?
Well, we do, except we don't have a lot in the agenda right now. We were looking this afternoon and it's, we don't know that we're going to have anything, Lee, but let's still go at 6:30 then. And, and we should be done by seven. And if we have a plan commission, we'll move into that afterwards.
Okay, so the, looks like we're looking at 6:30 next Monday night. So be Zoom ready and Pam will get you out the information accordingly. With that, I think we, we covered a lot of ground this evening. We got the full licenses, yep. Everybody in favor of the licenses as a motion? Go ahead. Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. Hey, we have one more thing here tonight to do. And that was B, we need a motion to adjourn. Nate, go ahead.
Yeah, cool. Thank you. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second to that motion? Nobody's got a second to that motion.
I'll second that.
All right, Jeff Luther with a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you, everybody, for a long meeting tonight. We did what we had to do. Everybody be safe out there, okay? Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
See you next week.